Today's date is April 26, 2018. It's 5:00 PM. And Barb, could you please call the roll?
Chair Levent.
Here.
Vice Chair Pelletier. Treasurer Pearson.
Here.
Clerk O'Loughlin.
Here.
Director Hepner.
Here.
Director Patachak.
Here.
Director Stivland.
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you. And for the audience, I would note that I did get a text from Director Pelletier. She said she'd be here in about one minute, so we'll expect her coming in. So with that, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Seeing none, the agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is a motion, or is adjourned to a closed session. I'm just going to read this. Closure of a board meeting for preliminary consideration of allegations against individuals subject to board authority as required on a Minnesota statute, Section 13D, Point 05, Subdivision 2, Per N B. However, the statute also indicates that a meeting must be, must also be open. This is 13D, Point 05, Subdivision 2, or, or, 4B. A meeting must also be open at the request of the individual who is the subject of the meeting. On the subjects of the meeting that we were, were to close are Directors Stivland and Director Patachak. I did receive an email from Director Stivland indicating that both she and Director Patachak would like to take advantage of that statutory provision and ask that the meeting be open to the public. So in order to make the record clear, I'm just going to ask each one of them if that is in fact what they wish to do. If it is, and both of them agree, then we will continue as if this was an open meeting to discuss this matter. So I'll start with you, Director Patachak. Is that what your desire is?
Yes.
Thank you. Director Stivland, is that what your desire is?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Perfect. Then for the public's edification, this matter arises out of a complaint that the district received, the board met in private session to hire an outside investigator, Kristi Hastings from the Pemberton Law Group. Maybe it's Pemberton Law Firm. I'm not sure, but it's not really relevant. They, she did her own investigation. She concluded that there was a violation of board policy. At that, after receipt of that, the board met again in closed session. It was determined at that time to engage the services of a facilitator to see if we could come to a resolution for the district. And the parties met with the facilitator, and this meeting was, is to discuss the results of that. I would note that even though this is an open meeting and we have our legal counsel here, it does not allow us to forego the other requirements up by statute, i.e., if there's privacy issues and privacy concerns and data practices, we are not allowed to discuss that. And for more on that, I'm going to turn it over to our legal counsel, Maggie Wallner, who can fill us in on procedures, and then we will go forward with our discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wayne. The, my, my first, I guess, cautionary note is that you have a report from the-
And I'll hand that out right now.
We will have a report from the facilitator. And notwithstanding the fact that this report is provided to at an open meeting, the classification of the data remains the same under the Minnesota Government Data Practice Act. And specifically, that means that any private data contained in that report retains its private classification. And that includes, of course, the identity of the complainant by name or otherwise. So any discussion regarding the content would have to be done, keeping in mind the data privacy requirements under the Minnesota Government Data Practice Act.
Since we're handing this out now, I think it's just an opportunity for people to review
I do think we all have been guilty of not really meeting that standard all the time from at one time or another. I'm sure each of us could say that we've been disrespectful. And I would say that we can't afford to have an investigation into that disrespectful behavior every time it happens. So I just kind of guess I would like to say that. I think I would be remiss to not say something about sort of the background of all of this. It was in the final, the conclusions in the investigation as well, that the backdrop to all of this is, you know, this unique and challenging time that we find ourselves in. I think the decision to close Marine, Withrow, Oak Park, and to get out of the Valley Crossing Agreement has really been very, very difficult for very many people in our community. And I think the process and the outcome of that whole situation has been very difficult for a lot of people to really understand and get their heads around. And I think it's caused a lot of stress and strain on our community, and I think it continues to do that. I think we still find ourselves to be kind of divided, and I find that to be really unfortunate. What I'm concerned about now is, you know, that's all done now, and we need to keep moving forward as a district. And as a board, we need to work together. We need to be together as one board, but recognizing that we do have different perspectives, and we do have different life experiences. And that's why there's seven of us up here instead of just one, because we're better when we really pay attention to our differences, and we really listen to each other without jumping to conclusions or assumptions and making judgments. So I guess I just want to, I just want to make the statement that I'm committed to trying to do my best to really listen to this community. I want people in this community and parents to feel like they're true partners, and that they're welcome to be a part of all of the processes that we are here in this, in our schools, and that, you know, we're just, we are all in this together, and we have to, we have to make that work. I feel like, in some ways, I've been seen by some people in the community and even on this board as like an enemy, you know, like I'm the bad guy or something. But I want to just be very clear. I'm a fellow board member here. I really do want to work with each and every one of you. I find each and every one of you to be incredibly intelligent and committed and devoted to high-quality education, and that's what we're here for. And I would like to just finally wrap up by saying that the recommendation from the lawyer who did conduct the investigation into this matter gave us, as a board, the recommendation that we practice the golden rule. So don't do to others what you would not want done to you, or do unto others as you would have others do unto you. And I just think that's something we, we just, I am committed to, and I think it's good to remind ourselves that is, that's where we're at. We need to treat each other like we would want to be treated.
Thank you very much. Director Pelletier?
I wanted to hear both Director Patachek and Director Stivlin's statements before commenting, and I thank you both for the statements. And this is an awkward time, an uncomfortable time, and I don't think any of us are pleased to be here. And I think you stated it very well, Director Stivlin, do unto others as you would have them do to you. So I hope that we all going forward, you know, we all make mistakes, and, you know, I think, I think we have to, there's always, there's always reason for reflection. And this gives me pause, and it gives me pause on a personal level. It should give all of us pause, pause for reflection. And I'm glad to hear you both say that in a public setting, because that shows me personally that you are willing to move forward as well, in a positive manner. And I appreciate those comments.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. We will move on to the next item, which is a pledge of allegiance. If anyone could stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, I am derelict in my duty here. Tom, you want to read mission?
Sure.
And Paula? Are you ready? I am ready. Next on the agenda is District Mission Director Patachek.
The mission of Stillwater Area Public Schools in partnership with students, family, and community is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you very much. And our board goals, Director Lachlan.
The Stillwater Area Public Schools Board of Education ensures outstanding learning opportunities for the social, emotional, and academic growth of every student in our school district through authentic partnerships and meaningful communication with our community, parents, and students. Every decision is made with a commitment to equity for all students and for future generations impacted by our actions. We provide our stakeholders with regular updates on student achievement, along with continual plans to enhance student learning in our district. We ensure that our systems of management and oversight are clearly defined. We invite ongoing dialogue and partnership with our community to learn from their knowledge and to enhance learning for our students.
Thank you very much. I should ask Superintendent Pontrelli, when we get to the student reports, are they assuming six o'clock, so we may have to come back to it?
I believe so.
Okay, that's fine. We'll come back to that. How about the district recognition, too?
Some of our, right, the district recognition is for the J.K. movement, and Dr. George Nolan is here, but his guest is not yet.
Okay, we will accommodate them. When they get here, if someone can just give us the high sign, we'll go back to those items on the agenda, because they are as important as the rest of the items on there. So we could probably do a superintendent report.
Slowly.
Take your time.
I do have quite a bit to share, so I'll do that. Thank you. The first thing I'd like to do is respond, we had a speaker last week share more about dyslexia. And there are some things that have been developing across the metro area, and so I just wanted to share with the board some of the updates and things that we've been working on, and actually the districts across the metro area have been working on. It was stated at the last open forum that we have 1,900 students with dyslexia in the district. This isn't accurate, and I assume it comes from what dyslexia advocates say regarding up to 20% to 25% of the population might have dyslexia. But I think it's important to distinguish the numbers and estimate, and it doesn't really accurately reflect how many people are actually diagnosed. And it often includes people who struggle with reading but haven't been diagnosed with dyslexia. Current, we have 3,400 students in our elementary schools. Of these, 126 receive specific learning disability support in reading, language arts, and writing. And this number includes students who have dyslexia also. To offer another perspective, we have about 397 elementary students who receive special education support, and this can fall under 12 different categories. You've heard many of them, DCD, developmentally cognitively delayed, EBD, autism, speech and language, those kind of things. We currently have 326 students who receive reading intervention support. These are students who have been identified as needing additional support beyond what the classroom teachers can alone provide. This is the support that students who have attributes of dyslexia would normally receive. Dyslexia falls under special education services and is a medically diagnosed neurobiological condition. It's not just difficulty reading. We'll not be assuming that any students with a reading difficulty have dyslexia, because we can't diagnose students. That's not our role. We aren't trained to do that. As Karen Lallaroe and Rachel Larson shared with you in the past, we have strong diagnostic and reading support through our MTSS system. Students who may have dyslexia or attributes who need more structured individualized specialized instruction can receive Tier Two, Tier Three, or special education support to meet their needs. And if you remembered at the learning session, Director Hepner had spoken with the specialist at MDE, and she had six questions for us to ask if we were in compliance, and we are with all of those. Districts following evidence and research-based literacy approaches are not moving to structured literacy for all students. It's more of an intervention for students who need that extra structured process. And so many of them are doing what we're doing. They're supporting a balanced literacy model for all students, where structured literacy supports those students who need more of it. It's a component or a piece of a balanced literacy program. Now that legislation has been passed on dyslexia, and many of you have been involved in that and heard about what that's been, schools across our state are developing plans to offer professional development for teachers, which we are. They're implementing screening, which we are. They're implementing checklists, which we are. And they're enhancing their multi-tiered systems of support. We've been planning for this since 2017, and that was at the reach-out of parents who were advocating that we do more for our students who had dyslexia. Next year, we'll be using a dyslexia checklist in addition to our other screeners, and we'll be offering professional development to teachers specifically related to dyslexia. Last week, our coordinators attended a metro consortium meeting with 12 other districts regarding dyslexia. Dyslexia advocates in Minnesota are connected and are sharing the same message and advocating for structured literacy as the curriculum for all students with schools and school board and administration across the metro area. This past meeting was sponsored through special education departments but included general education. There are 13 districts that will be partnering to ensure that educational experts are sharing their information, knowledge, and expertise within these advocacy conversations taking place. And I think it's important to distinguish advocacy versus experts. Each of the 13 districts represented have parents and dyslexia advocates asking for structured literacy, and many of them are associated with decoding dyslexia. Districts are doing what we're doing, but we're positively commenting on the comprehensive approaches and systems that we have in place here in Stillwater. We're committed to providing balanced literacy instruction for all students, along with structured literacy components for our struggling readers. If you remember during our literacy session, two of those components, Letterland and Words Their Way, are components of a structured literacy program. So we do have that for our students, and we also have Orton-Gillingham, which is a Tier Two intervention for our students, and we know that that does work for those students. We'd be more than happy to continue meeting with parents who've been emailing board members and speaking at our open forums, and we are really interested in partnering with folks. So if you are interested and like to come in and have a conversation with us and work with us, we'd welcome that. We'd also like to share that if more parents would like to learn information about dyslexia, they can continue, they can attend an upcoming decoding dyslexia event. There's another event on May 2nd from 6:30 to 9:00, and Haddonfield Performing Arts Center in White River Lake, and I know that they would welcome people attending that. I also have a response to last week's open forum from Andrea McCready on the progress of topics that were discussed during mediation. A few of the things that were discussed, I will share where we are with those. The first was that the district, for those of you who didn't hear the conversation before it was asked about how we were following up with topics that came up during mediation, and we haven't reported out on those, but we have been working on those, so that's what this update is about. The first was that the district will revise its policies to create a regular schedule for requests for proposals every three to five years for the following professional consultants, financial consultants, financial auditors, architects, and lawyers. The schedule could be staggered, but we'll start with the financial consultant. And we've already begun the RFP process for a financial advisor and construction management in anticipation of needing to do something eventually with Brookview in the future. The second was that the board, action approving these consultants will state publicly the compensation rates, and will state the compensation rates, as we have already in the past that we've done just since January. The third is that the board will revise its bill-paying practices. All bills to be paid will go to the board for review before they're paid. Upon board approval, we can start this, and we are in the process of notifying employees and vendors. We anticipate if the board would like, this process can start July 1st. The reason for July 1st date is we have to notify our employees and vendors and others that they will need to wait for after-board approval for payment for things, so people would like to know that ahead of time. The second part of that is we will also make explicit the policy that all contracts not within the admin's ability must have documented board action to approve, and we've already followed this process. A recent example is the literacy adoption. Number four is that the board will revise the January organizational resolutions to use plain language and enhance transparency, and we will make it clear that the board has delegated authority to these administrators to contract for budget-proved items up to $100,000. The organizational resolutions appointing the professional consultants will reiterate the compensation rates, and this is already completed and was implemented in the January organizational meeting. Then number five, the board will revise district policy for senior cabinet-level administrators to prohibit outside employment without the superintendent's knowledge and approval. And moving forward, this is not and has not been an issue, and we expect to comply with that. So those are responses to the mediation requests from last, I can't remember when. I have more, though.
Good. We've got time.
I'll talk more slowly. A few things that I did want to share that are exciting for us, that are not responses. Hot off the press today, the Stillwater Area Public Schools has been recognized by the Stillwater Gazette and has won three Readers' Choice Awards. Each year, the newspaper polls its readers for the best of in the St. Croix Valley, and this year, Stillwater Area High School was voted the best public school. Oakland Middle School Principal Andy Fields was named best principal, and the Rutherford PTA won Best Parent-Teacher Association. Congratulations to our leadership staff and parents for being recognized as remarkable throughout the valley. We also engaged in the Partnership Plan Gala last Friday. Many of you here this evening were there. It was a great event, and I'd like to thank Bev Petry, Kristy Smith, and Krista Walsh, and the Partnership Plan Board for just hosting an incredible event this year. They raised over $34,000 for our students at the elementary level for yoga comp, which helps support our mental health and just relaxation techniques for our children. And then, I think I am getting finally to the last two things. Our final large group meeting for the year for the Mental Health Collaborative was held Tuesday evening at Oakland Golf Course. We had over, about approximately 30 people attend to share recommendations for supporting our students and community in the areas of awareness, prevention, crisis, and support. And we invite all the committee members who have volunteered their time and expertise over this last year to be recognized at the May 10th school board meeting. We'd like to have a special thank you to Family Means, Youth Service Bureau, Washington County, Lakeview Hospital, NAMI, and district staff for facilitating the efforts throughout this past year, and we're looking forward to working with community members to bring their ideas to fruition. They really have some great work. So go ahead.
I'm going to put myself in this category, but I've heard a few parents say that they've been, they've kind of missed a few of the meetings, the mental health meetings, and, you know, you miss a couple of meetings here and there, and before you know it, you feel like you're out of the loop and you don't know what's going on.
We'd love to have them back.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say that, I think, I don't know how we do that communication. Oh, Chris, Karissa's not here.
You still have a communications person to help with.
Okay, good. Just to maybe kind of reiterate that they can pop right in, and they're not going to miss a beat. I think, I've had a few of those comments, so.
They certainly can. Actually, the work begins now. We've done a lot of learning and collaborating and talking about what the possibilities might be between partnerships with Washington County, our providers, the school district. They've come up with some great proposals for awareness and prevention and for crisis and support. So now the teams will be saying, okay, what should we start with, what needs to happen over the next, over the summer and next year? So we would love to have people participate, and they can reach out to Dr. George Nolan if they are interested, or to Barb Prue, and she will get their name and number of people would like to join. We'll continue to put all the information out to everybody who signed up. So after we have each meeting, we have the talking points, we'll have those, we'll have the proposals, and they'll be able to catch up on what we have.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And finally, one of those partners, Youth Services Bureau, is having their second annual gala called Growing Together, raising funds to improve chemical health in our local schools and community. And it is Friday, May 4th, from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. at the Lake Elmo Event Center. And I have a banner here, I don't know if you can read this or not, but folks are invited to still attend. They are still taking reservations. I just talked with them this afternoon, and it is a great event also to support our students and community members, parents, everyone within the valley. So please feel free to go to www.ysb.net if you're interested in attending. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Barb, do we have any speakers tonight for open forum?
I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
We'll get you signed up. Let the students be surprised when they get here. There's two items left.
That's funny. I love it.
Your goal is to be done before they get here.
Normally, we go till 6:00, right? That would be kind of funny. That'd be a funny little trick to play on them.
So do you think you can get a drink home at 6:00?
Thank you so much.
I don't know.
I wonder if we can.
I don't know. By 5:00, we'll be open at 4:45, so. We have two speakers tonight, so I will read our preamble, and I would note that we're discussing the preamble under one of the action items. So, Stillwater Area School District welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, the law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee-student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversations with speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concerns presented. You will be given five minutes. When I call your name, if you could come forward, state your name and your address. And Director Pelletier is our official timekeeper, and she will give you a countdown from two minutes down to zero. So with that, the first speaker tonight is Carl Blondin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent Pontrelli. First, I did have a chance to view the demographic study, and I think it confirms the wisdom of the bold plan of closing down schools where students are not needed and building in the South where the population is booming. I think this report only emphasizes the need for selling Marine and Withrow and Central Services and plowing that capital back into school buildings in the South, expanding Brookview so it can serve students rather than having capital being idle. Second, I did send all of you an email about my concerns with the proposed rule change for open forum. Basically, I have two concerns. One, the rule, using more words, is less specific. In particular, I'm concerned that there is not a specific prohibition against vulgarity. I guess I'm a little on the conservative side. I don't like that. The current rule does address no character attacks and no malice, and I think it's well worded in the current rule. And the current rule reiterates state law that there should be no specific attacks identifying students or staff by name. The proposed change does not reiterate that law. I think that's a weakness. The proposed change talks about attack. Well, I think we need to have an objective standard for what constitutes an attack. What is the difference between an attack and criticism? I have criticized board members. Perhaps someone would consider those an attack. We need to have an objective standard. When we have subjective standards, our freedoms are impinged upon, and life becomes a little more tyrannical. I've criticized members of this community. Are those attacks? Well, Ms. Hayner paraphrased a neo-Nazi, "Is it wrong for me to stand up against hate speech? Is that an attack, or is that a criticism?"
Excuse me. Excuse me. If you want to sign up, you are more than welcome to sign up. Thank you.
Ms. McCready has repeatedly misrepresented the law, and I've called that to the attention. Should someone be allowed to lie repeatedly about the law? Should another person be denied the opportunity to point out the law as being misrepresented? I think those are important issues. I've criticized Directors Patachek and Stivlin related to the facts, related to the investigation you discussed earlier. I considered that criticism. Why would it be an attack if what I said was a true statement? Should true statements be prohibited because someone else considers them an attack? Additionally, the rule says that a person's right to speak will be impinged upon. They will not be allowed to speak anymore. What period of time is that for? Just that meeting? If it's longer than the meeting, it may be a prior restraint of speech. I think that's a very important issue. You should have your lawyers address it. You have a great lawyer with Peter Michael. I'd run it by him before I would adopt the policy. I guess it's no secret that I disagree with 834 voice, and I don't want to silence them. As a matter of fact, I would like the chairman to allow all of them 10 minutes instead of five minutes to speak, because I sincerely believe that as the public is educated, and here's their ad hominem attacks, their misrepresentations of fact, their misrepresentations of the law, the venom, I think the public will better understand them, and the public will be better served. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Lauren Schaefer.
That's me.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lauren Schaefer. I wanted to introduce myself to you tonight. You'll be hearing from me from time to time, I suspect, and what it's about is school safety. I live at 4785 McDonald Drive, Circle North in Stillwater. I have two children. One is currently a fifth grader at Lily Lake, and the other, I'm a little bit of an old dog for this, but I've got a five-year-old at home. She'll be going to Rutherford first thing this fall. I'll tell you a little bit about my background. I graduated with a degree in education. I spent 40 years in business, in most of it in South Florida. I chaired two education boards, and I was the chairman for the City of Delray Beach Educational Partnership. About six weeks ago now, South Florida had an experience with a shooting at Marjory Stillman Douglas High School. I know you've all known about it, if you've watched the news at all. When that happened, my phone blew up. I chaired a school just south of that. It's a pretty tragic, very tragic event, and it made me think about the safety of the Stillwater schools. I'd been through a number of the schools, and as a parent, you know, especially in a town like Stillwater, 18,000 people, super nice town, great place to live, you don't really look at the safety of the buildings and for safety procedures when you're thinking about educating your child. It just doesn't happen. So what I did is I contacted three of the principals, the principal from the middle school where my son will be going next year, Rutherford, and Lily Lake, and I said, listen, I'd like to come down, I'd like to walk through your school with you. I'd like, I have some experience with this. As a matter of fact, we had a shooting at one of the schools that I chaired, and unfortunately, I know more about this than I really care to know. And they agreed to do that, and I said, here's what we'll do. Our family will put up some money, and you can raise an equal amount, and we'll help use that money to pick off some of the low-hanging fruit for safety at these three schools. I can't impact the state, I can't impact the nation, but I think I can have an effect on the schools that my children are going to go to. So that was the intent of doing that. I first met with Nate Cox, super young guy, very personable, does a great job at Lily Lake, and after the conversation, he was kind enough to put me in communication with Dr. McDowell over here, who's a special guy, I think, and his executive team is all sitting right here. I had great interactions with all of them. We contacted the local police departments. I've been talking with the sheriff and the city police chief here in town, also in Bayport. And here's what I would tell you. And here's what I would tell you. The safety has to be an immediate priority. It's not something that's in your policy statement. There's nothing in your policy statement that I heard earlier about education in a safe environment. That tells me a lot. I don't blame you, but safety of our students has to be the number-one priority above everything else, and the safety of your staff. Without question, just like it was in my businesses. It has to be that way. So, what I would encourage you to do, make this effort to increase the safety of our schools, along with Bob McDowell and his executive team. You're going to have to spend some money, we're going to have to raise some money. But Stillwater schools should be the safest schools in Minnesota. And I think we can lead that effort, so I would encourage you to make that a top, top priority. With that, I look forward to talking with you all at another date, and I communicate with you, and thanks for having a great staff here. I've enjoyed working with them.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. With that, Annabelle, welcome. Yeah, no, our goal is to have you be the last speaker, because we would have been done, but unfortunately, that's not going to happen. But we started at five, because we had some other things, thinking we would really start the meeting at six, but we got done sooner. So, with that, we will go back to you, and we look forward to your student report.
That's okay, I'm good. Alrighty, so, I will start with Ava's announcement, and she was covering sports and activities. The spring formal will be held in the pack this Friday from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. The dance is only for freshmen and sophomores, as the juniors and seniors will experience prom. Student council is getting very excited as the day approaches, and we have sold more tickets each day as lunch goes through. Prom is taking place on May 5th at the Myth Live from 7:30 to 11:30 p.m.
They just fold it down.
There we go. From 7:30 to 11:30 p.m. Prom tickets are currently on sale through fee pay for $50, and the price will go up to $60 next week. Spring Coffee House will take place on May 4th. There will be two shows, and tickets will go on sale next week during lunches. While the band program performed a successful spring concert last Tuesday, the high school orchestras have a busy schedule for the month of May. On May 3rd at 7:30 p.m., the Konamichi Chamber Orchestra has their spring concert, followed by the Philharmonic, Symphonic, and Varsity orchestras on May 17th. Then, the long-awaited concerto concert will take place on May 20th at 3:00 p.m. Tickets have been on sale since April 20th, and they may sell out soon. The spring sports season feels as though it has officially begun due to the nice weather we've been having. Tomorrow night, the baseball and softball teams both have away games. And looking into the weekend, the boys' golf and girls' track team will be competing in huge varsity invitationals against more than 15 other teams. Tomorrow, student council elections are taking place. Students can vote for the classmates who they feel best represent the high school. The council will have nine seniors, eight juniors, seven sophomores, and six freshmen. Last week, the elections for the presidential positions took place. With three pairs winning, Abdul Muhammad and Nikhil Kumar won the election. They look forward to filling these chairs during the 2018-2019 school year. And now, on to the academic update. Spring is officially here, and the excitement could not be greater within the halls of Stillwater Area High School. The annual senior countdowns have started to fill the Pony Center walls with only 24 days left of school. But who's counting? Excitement for commencement and summer are going among students. Students are working tirelessly to wrap up course material prior to AP testing finals or other end-of-the-symester requirements which are quickly encroaching. Classes such as AP Environmental Science and AP Biology are entering the exciting time of independent projects. Some of my classmates have ducklings and will begin studying the effects of imprinting on the ducks. I will be getting three different breeds of chicks next Thursday, and my study will examine the weight gain and growth seen in the early days of development in poultry. Pre-calculus classes are looking at vectors. Human geography classes are looking at the effects of outsourcing jobs. And our choir just returned home from their trip to New York City, and Bel Shantay Choir will be departing to Appleton, Wisconsin, where they too will be on choir tour. The elective class of Law and Justice is looking at liability before they head into their final criminal law unit. This past week was a very exciting time to be a pony. We gained a fellow pony as Dwayne The Rock Johnson joined the stable and kindly rented out the theater for The Rock's biggest fans, senior Katie Kalzenberg and her friends and classmates. On the same day that The Rock's voice filled the halls, the National Honor Society hosted the spring blood drive. 111 students and staff raised their sleeve to help save lives. 79 total units were collected, which equates to 10 pounds of blood, or approximately 237 lives saved. In totality, our sports are finally able to practice outside. Classes are reaching the apex of educational material. The Rock has helped us to make international news, and we have lots of exciting things in the upcoming weeks, like prom, the 9-10 dance, coffee house, movie night on the football field, and of course, graduation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is J.K. here?
Yes.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for Superintendent Pontrelli, Board Chair Lehman. Really excited that we were able to bring organization to our school district that I've worked with in my prior life as a principal. And the tangible impact that they had with our kids who didn't feel welcome, who felt kind of outside of the mainstream. And we had brought them to Stillwater Area Schools at the middle schools, Stillwater Middle School, and also at Lake Elmo. And the impact that they've had immediately with some of those kids that they've worked with has been remarkable in regards to helping students feel welcome, making sure that they're paying attention to academics, and then teaching them some pro-social skills and mentoring that's very important with our kids. And at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Johnny Allen, who's a St. Thomas grad, who's worked on the east side also of the cities in St. Paul. They currently work at a couple of middle schools in St. Paul, and have had a really good, profound impact. And some of the information we have received from the principal at Stillwater Middle, also the principal of Lake Elmo, has been nothing but positive. Kids have had some great experiences. Super Bowl weekend, they had a chance to hang out with a couple Viking players and Ray Lewis, and they met all these famous football players. They also have done a lot of intangible team-building activities with kids, and really helping kids feel a sense of self and welcoming in the area. So, what I would like to do at this time is introduce Mr. Allen and kind of have him explain what his program's about and the impact that it's having.
Great, thank you very much, welcome.
Yes, evening. This is actually my first school board meeting ever, so... Well, I'll keep it very short and sweet. My name is Johnny Allen, grew up in St. Paul. As Dr. Nolan mentioned, I'm a St. Thomas grad. I started the organization, the JK Movement, 10 years ago, but we've been in service in regards of after-school eveninging and in-school services now for six years now, and ongoing. We have served over 800 students since we started, primarily in St. Paul. This is our first opportunity out here in Stillwater. And what we're doing out here in the middle schools and at Lake Elmo is our in-school leadership program. We work primarily with our seventh and eighth graders at the junior high side, and then we also at Lake Elmo work with a bunch of fourth graders. And in that program, we help them, as Dr. Nolan mentioned, learn about self with group activities, group lessons that we provide. And we also give them opportunity to be offered some learning experiences. Right now, they're in the works of doing a youth-led barbecue rib-off next year. So, even though the rib-off sounds great, they're actually learning the internal operations pieces of that. How to write a business plan, how to write a marketing plan. They're learning all of those business aspects that is youth-appropriate, but it's an opportunity for them to learn how to run an event as big as we envision. So, I'll keep it short and sweet. We are also in the works for next school year to expand our services, not only at Stillwater Middle and Lake Elmo, but also at Stillwater High School, and I think it's Oakland Middle School. Yeah, we've been given the opportunity to provide in-school services where we haven't encountered that opportunity in St. Paul public schools, but we're taking advantage here. I offer evening and after-school programs out in St. Paul, but Stillwater's the first school district giving us the in-school, during school time, opportunity. So, we're very honored and appreciative to be given this opportunity, and we're looking to continue to build our relationships out here in Stillwater. Thank you.
Would you be open for any questions, if anybody had any?
Um, yeah.
Yeah. Director Pearson.
Thank you, first of all, for what you're doing. How are the students chosen that are in the group?
We work with the admin staff at the middle school. Fourth grader is a little more lenient, being that they're fourth graders, they're still learning. So, it's more of fun activities for them, but also coming with the leadership concept. But for the junior high and for the rest of the upperclassmen, we'll be working with the admin staff, and they identify some of the students who they feel could benefit from the program. Although our services are kind of directed towards the students of color in Stillwater, we've opened it to all students, and we've witnessed that the last few weeks here. Yeah, with the increased number of participants.
Anyone else? Director Lathman.
So, there's been a program in our district for a number of years, Love and the Skin I'm In, founded by a fellow St. Paulite, Robin Hickman.
Yes, I know Ms. Hickman.
And that program, I think, very similar to what you were saying about your program, about really giving students that affirmation of self and those opportunities to grow and see, as Robin says, those visions of possibilities of who they can become, and just how important it is to have those windows and mirrors for all of our students to be able to see themselves reflected in leadership positions and to see what other possibilities exist out there. So, thank you for the work that you're doing with our youth.
Thank you, yes, I know Ms. Hickman very well. I work with her, and we're collaborating in St. Paul. But no need to reinvent the wheel with certain programs out and quality foundations and things of that nature, you know. No need to reinvent. It's just all about giving the opportunity to work with youth and being consistent in their lives.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you.
Please let us know when the Rib Fest is.
I'll definitely do that.
Thank you. And then, Dr. Nolan, thank you for bringing this. Can you just tell, because I don't know if a lot of people realize what your role is in our district, and this is kind of our first opportunity for you to present some of the programs, and I think it's great for people to get to know you.
I've been here about eight and a half months, I think, something like that. And the first thing I really wanted to do is just get to know the community, get to know staff, get to know people. And so, I've kind of laid low and tried to build as many relationships as possible, but also trying to get an idea of what are some of the things I can help support. I'm the director of personalized learning, and my whole goal is just to learn as much as I can and then maybe bring a lot of the community agencies that I've worked with before in the past that have had some tangible successes. And so, that's been my whole goal, is to support our students and our principals and our support staff the best way I can. But I've laid low, because I want to learn before I come out.
Thank you for all you do. It's really important for all of us, so...
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can all applaud that. Ava, I don't know if you heard, we started early, and so, you're good to go. So, your report was awesome, so... Next is the Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the school board and will be enacted by one motion and an affirmative vote by a majority of the board members present. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered a separate subject of discussion by the board. On tonight's consent agenda, we have the minutes of the April 12, 2018 school board meeting, accept the gifts and donations for March 2018, the disbursements register for April 6 through the 19, 2018, the treasurer's report for March of 2018, the human resource personnel report, the joint powers agreement for food services between Independent School District Number 834, Stillwater, and Independent School District Number 832, Madamidi, school nutrition program joint agreement with St. Croix Catholic School, school nutrition program joint agreement with Northeast Metro 916 Program at the ECFC, school nutrition program for the joint agreement with Pankalo 916 Program, and the Stillwater Middle School pavement rehabilitation. Seeing that none have been pulled, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through J?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. With that, all in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye opposed, same sign. Seeing none carries. Are our reports here?
Thank you, yes, they are.
We have two reports tonight, the demographic study and the dyslexia resolution.
Right, I'd like to introduce Mr. Dennis Cheeseborough to talk to you a little bit about the demographic study. And as the board knows, we did request for proposals to look at a different consultant to use, and I think that you'll find this evening, the information that's being shared is very in-depth, and it's very live-time. And so, without further ado, Dennis Cheeseborough from Teamworks International.
Welcome, while you get set up.
Well, thank you.
She ran out on you.
This is where there's either a switch...
Is that it, right there?
There it is, oh, there we go. Well, good evening, both board and superintendent. Good to be with you. Again, Dennis Cheeseborough with Teamworks International. It's our honored pleasure to be able to present to you at least the initial analysis that we were asked to do, and I believe that this report has been forwarded to you. So, what I'm going to do is, given the short time, is to... The goals of this presentation is to familiarize yourself with the type and the organization, the data, and the research that was done, some of the key findings, and at least have some introductory questions that you may have based upon what we found. And as you go, and hopefully, there might be an opportunity for more in-depth conversation in the future. Okay? So, in this page, we just kind of basically go through that. In this report, we're going to have an overall view of race, ethnicity, census demographics, resident birth analysis, housing and dwelling type, resident student, yield analysis. Then, we take a completely separate look at both active and future housing developments, and then look at your historical enrollment and trends and facilitialization, as well as your traditional market share to date, which is the yield of school-aged children who are enrolling in your schools. And finally, what we're going to do is roll that all together and provide for you some projected enrollment trends if nothing changes. And what I'll try to do as we go along this short overview is present to you what we see are some of the key variables that might shift these enrollment trends going into the future. And then, what we do have in the appendix is both historical and projected enrollment projections for each school and by grade, going out in the future in five years. Okay? Does that make sense? All right. And I'm going to be, hopefully, everybody can... I'm not going to read the blah, blah, blah. I imagine you can read that yourself. But basically, what we've done is we've taken publicly purchased data, plus your private confidential data, and merged them together. In addition, since we do work for the state of Minnesota, we also brought in live birth analysis, and we've organized all of the data to your school boundary and your elementary school boundaries, which is what makes it a bit unique, as well as housing data. Throughout this entire presentation, you're going to see a north-south view, because we found that by splitting the district north-south, it gives us... You can see more data because of, as I would say, the rectangular shape of your district. And as you can see, we have the current school boundaries at the elementary level where you see dots or pins in your document or actual... Those are where your enrolled students live. Anywhere, and they may be enrolled anywhere in your district, but that's where students who are enrolled live. And so, it just gives you a sense of where students are enrolled in this current school year. What this Page 4 takes a look at is just, I'm just going over this quickly, is overall population. So, anytime you look at one of our reports, if you look in the upper left-hand corner, you're going to see, "What am I looking at?" There almost always will be a narrative and then data table that supports the narrative. So basically this looks at from 2010 to 2017 and projections to 2022 for total population of all ages. Then what we're going to be, you're going to see, uh, and I usually use the first one to go through, is you're going to see a breakdown or demonstration of that at a smaller, um, unit. And maybe you've seen mapping like this in the future? Yes? No?
No.
Okay, I'll go through and explain. So what it is, is when we look at this data, again, if you look at the upper left-hand corner, you're going to see, what are we looking at? Total population. And then the data is organized by census blocks. Census blocks are determined by the federal government as of the last census. And for that, each census block, there is information that can be purchased. What I will say is so if you look at some of these, you're going to see a census block and we'll see if this will work. You see a shape here, that's a census block. And then that is as of last year, this past year, the total number estimated people living in that block. If you look at the lower right-hand, you're going to see a gradation, color gradation scale. So on any of these charts, the darker the color, the denser, the higher the number, the lighter is the lower. Um, when we do, when we're doing enrollment projections and demographic projections, when you see them for your district, one thing that you would need to understand as board is that we are actually providing you the actual information for the most unique shape that you have in your district, which was decided many decades ago when farmers got to choose which school district they wanted to belong to. Thus you have the shape. So the reason why we say that, as many times if you go online and download data from public sites, it's not going to be a portion to the actual design of your school district, which is what we're doing. Okay? So you're going to see numbers in the census blocks and so on each of these, you're going to see numbers. The color gives you a, a general scale and then later on, we're going to be showing you percentages. So here are the numbers north and south in terms of 2017. And just so you know, all of this data gets updated every February. So every February, all the, all this information is updated. We look at the total population, then what you're going to see here is what's the projected population change for the next five years? Yes?
Clarify, so if it says 2017, that's, that's data that is from February of 2017. So it's currently more than a year old? Is that correct?
No, it's from February of 2018.
Okay. So it's fresh, we just got it. Okay.
You just, we just got it as of first week in February.
Okay.
So this is the latest data that you can see. Now what you see here is percent change.
So Dennis, just pulling off that, please. So the data is collected by the census the year before, or what?
Yes, it's, it's collected, it's collected prior and it's made available for purchase in February.
Thank you.
I'll give you an example. If you have a major, uh, if you have a major development in senior housing that goes up, right, and it gets built and it opens up, 18 months later, the data will change for that census block as for the number of people by what age living in there. So there's, it's less than two-year factor. What we will, what you'll be seeing in this is that we are augmenting this with live birth data that is monthly. And we will be doing, um, housing development and housing sales quarterly. So we have annual data of the whole census and then we're augmenting that with live birth on a monthly basis and live housing development and sales on a quarterly basis.
And this is information that the district has access to through a computer program? Is that how it works, or?
The data I'm talking about, you don't have access to.
Okay.
However, what we are doing in this is that we format and provide this on a secure link for administration. So they have access to all the data, all the research as we do it.
So if I follow that a little bit, the Census Bureau, you told us how you get that data and that's good for like total population.
Right.
But for other things, there's going to be other sources.
Which is the Minnesota Department of Health?
Yeah.
Okay. And the other is a purchase service that we work with on housing, on housing developments. And that housing develop, that is, uh, on the ground analysis of what's going on as well as actual housing sales. So we're tracking all housing sales and housing developments.
Yep. One last one. And so when we get to the last part of this document, we're looking at student enrollments and what the capture rate is, that will come probably from actual school enrollments and?
That comes from actual school enrollment. And so we've integrated on top of this data that I talked about purchase, we have brought in all of your district school student data so that we have actual, we're, we're dealing with individual.
Thank you.
So it's, it's good in this time that you all understand the basis, where the information comes from and through this report can be able to see what sort of information is available. I'll just make this point to be clear. This is the first report. This is what we call baseline. From here, we begin to work with, with administration to, um, be able to translate this both into recommendations of strategy and for what sorts of things do we need to track and look at. So we already know that development is, is a key area of focus for your, for your district. When we look at percentages, this then would be what's the estimated percent change of total population between 2017 and 2022. If you would like to make a note to yourself in the margins, anytime you see percent, you need to know the base. So it's a percent change on the base of the slide two pages previous. Because 100% growth on 100 people may not be a whole lot of people. But for your, uh, for those that, um, don't do math in their heads, and it may, may not apply to you, but as we look at the percent change north and south, the next set of pages, starting on page nine, then gives you the projected number in 2022, so you don't have to do the math. And as you can see, there are large, uh, not only do census blocks change, but there are large differences here. And so populations are never equally distributed in a community, north to south. And because of, I'm going to keep going. This next section just begins to organize data into generational. Because many times we talk about boomers and Xers and millennials, but we're not actually, it's a good, they're interesting labels. Uh, but what we like to show you is, okay, what's the, what's the demographic difference? So what we do here is we're actually taking age groupings, let's say zero to four. How many zero to four-year-olds were there in 2010, 2017? And what's the projected in 2022? And then we organize those in a, in a generational band, so you could see that difference. And here's a case of percentage of numbers. You can look at the far right-hand side and you'll say, well, we have 30 and 45% growth in these two bands, but look at the basis. You have 45% growth, right, on 2,700 people. You go up and you have 4.2% growth, right, on 10,000. So you just have to play percentages. Because there's one thing I find that people do is they look at the percentages and they, and they create messages about the percentages without looking at the base.
Back to seven and eight. I just want to clarify. So to me, this shows, because we've been hearing that we're declining in the north, but to me, this doesn't show we're declining, we're just not growing as fast in the north as the south. Is that correct?
It depends which age group you're talking about, but from overall population, overall population, there are pockets of projected growth and decline.
Which is, I mean, basically zero in those two gray.
Very low. It's, it's flat.
Okay.
But that's, that's correct.
Director Patace?
Uh, Dennis, uh, very early in the study, what kind of caught, and I'm sure there's some reasons why you do that. On page four, for example, you use the figure 2017. You use the figure between 2010 and 17 and then, uh, 2022. Why those particular dates are, are they chosen? I mean, is it arbitrary? Is it because of when the last census was?
Um, it's not arbitrary. First of all, the la, yes, the last census was 2010. We receive projections in five-year increments. Okay? Also, we did work for the district back in that timeframe, so we also had a fairly robust data set from past research for the district. So we're combining, so that's why we chose those timeframes. And moving forward, then what we then next begin to project or look at on page 13 is ages zero to four, the actual numbers. And as you can see, this is where you begin to see a difference between the number in 2017 of zero-four-year-olds in census blocks and then in the mid to the north part of the district and how they compare to the mid to the south part of the district. We then, in the next, in 15, this gets back to, uh, uh, to the previous question about decline. Here you're now looking on the north on page 15, on the mid to north, and we're talking about percent of decline of zero to four-year-olds. And that's where you can have an overall population flat and increasing and in specific age groupings, it can be completely different than that. And they then take a look on page 16, that which we take a look at basically midpoint south. And as you know, in page 17, we're now combining that. I pointed this out when we first reviewed it, just as a point of reference. But you could take a look at the projected number of zero to four-year-olds up in this area here. And it's about equivalent to the one census block just to the east. So the color gradations in the numbers should give you a good sense of difference. And then when you look in 2022, the projected zero-four-year-olds, I will make a comment when you look at this, the projections of school age children out and others takes into account approved development, does not take into account development that would begin from, let's say, today forward. So if a new development opens up today, that information is not reflected here, but it's reflected later in the report. So there's a difference between, when we add housing data, we actually put in future housing and that's why you may see a slight difference in the data going forward. So I'm just going to go through this because this is just rolling up the age groups and we've only got about 15 minutes. The point here, there's a lot of information to digest and to go through specifically from administration. I'm also going to point out to you, because you're probably wondering what's going on with some of these school age populations, I'll, I'll point you in a moment as to why that is. So five to 14-year-olds, I'm just going to click through this. Then we get into resident birth analysis, which is, uh, what I find is either boards and school districts are aware of what's been going on with resident birth, or you don't. Okay? So what this does, it begins to map out based upon your current elementary boundaries between 2004 and the 2016-17 school year, how have resident births changed by your boundary areas? And you'll see that it, you have increases from a high of 43% to a decline of 55%. And that is beginning to impact you because those live births are filtering into your elementary side of your system. We then provide for reference is provided the live birth shift in the same timeframe from all of your surrounding school districts.
Yes, I'm confused though, because you have Afton, Anderson, Brookview, Lake Elmo, Lily Lake, Rutherford, Stonebridge. And, and you're saying that's how they changed from 2004, 2005 to 2016-17?
Yes.
How do you, historically, how do you figure that when those boundaries changed and four schools were closed?
It, the change of the school boundaries doesn't matter because the data is not, the data is linked to where they lived.
Okay.
So you could change the boundaries at any time and we could still organize the data.
Because you're using those blocks?
Yeah. And actually here, we're actually using the live birth data from the Department of Health, not census data. This is live birth analysis. So that's not linked to any of your boundaries. So...
It's whatever the boundaries are now.
Now, is how we organized it.
Thank you.
So I think if I remember correctly, looking at the data, there is a, there is a table that has each year what that total number is. And when I looked at those numbers, I discovered you, this is a comparison between that specific year, 2004 and 2005, and 2016 and 17.
Yes.
Those two particular years, one over the other. Is that correct?
No, it's between, it's every year between those two years.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, if you take an average of those, all of those years, and then look at the last year, the numbers come out differently. And I wonder why you wouldn't do it that way, because it seems like this is just a, this is just a line comparing where you started and where you ended. And it fluctuates a lot, you know?
It does fluctuate a lot, but we're giving you the, the difference over that timeframe so that you can compare this, this, this last school year from where it was. If you wanted information, if, here's an example. If you wanted detailed information, what is it every year? How does that impact? We can do that. We factored that into our enrollment projections.
Okay. How so?
Because we're choosing to show to you the difference between all the years, but we have the data of each of the individual years.
So I think it's your next slide, actually.
Yeah.
So if you take a look here, this is what I'm saying. We have the individual data of live births organized by your current boundaries, which we use for enrollment projections. But for the basis of this, we're just showing you the difference over time. So in this chart, you can see the difference between the two, as well as a comparison with your surrounding districts. And then what we did is we organized and said, how does that look geospatially on a map? So you can see the difference over time as you look at the northern half versus the southern. And so it's now organizing that. Then we took a look at housing and dwelling types. And so this, on page 29, it analyzes not only the different types of dwelling types within your school boundaries, we take a look at the year they were built and what was the average sales price for homes that sold during certain time periods. Then what we did is, and I get, there's a lot of detailed information. We took each of the boundaries and we broke it down into what number and percentage of housing types make our lie within each of those elementary school boundaries. This does not mean, this is not where your kids live, this is total housing.
When, when you took average sale price, is there a reason why you didn't take median instead of average?
Uh, because we just, we, we could do both. We just chose that, that people understand what's the average among all of that. We could, we could report back to you what the median was.
Okay.
Um, what's the significance of looking at the different housing values? Is it that families are, tend to go in certain homes? Is that the significance of why you report on that?
Uh, we report on the average sales price only because it's a typical question that we get when we talk about the types of home and people say, well, what's the value of the home? Does that make a difference? The other thing that gets, that comes into this is that if we do learning analysis, we organize learning analysis by estimated household income. And we can do learning analysis by housing type, which is actually is, can be quite valuable. So we're creating a, what I would say, a very comprehensive data set of which we then can pull out analysis in the future as we work with you. We're just trying to give you a sense of all the data. So what we do here, here's a mapping then, using colored charting of, and most of this, as you can see, is single family, but also allows you to see where the... but also allows you to see where the agricultural land is, which most of you are probably familiar with. Then what we do is we mapped into what's the estimated market value currently of these homes. So you get a sense of market value. And if you see large plots that are red, it's called farms, north to south. And again, trying to give you a good sense of the data analysis that have been done. Then this next chart on 35, using color coding lets you see when did housing get developed. So you can see from the blue in the pre-1950s to the dark red, which is 2010 to present. It gives you a sense of how has housing developed in your district. And just so you know, I know you're, because you all have perfect eyesight, you're really glad that we compressed this to eight and a half by 11 pages. If at any time there is something that's needed or required for your work, either as the administration or the board, we can also provide, provide this in large-scale format prints. Then we take a look at what has been the most recent sales price. So for any piece of property, we look at the most recent sales price regardless of years sold. And again, this is typically what we're asked to provide as a baseline report. It may or may not be useful to you, but we'd rather put out there what we know many will ask us to do. And in the most recent year, sales year, what was the price? I'm gonna kind of roll through this, given the time. And then what we take a look at, resident student yield analysis. So now we've taken all that housing and say, where your schoolchildren of this year live? 84% are in single-family dwellings, just under four in townhomes, 6% are apartments. You can see where they live now, so we've located them. And the resident enrolled by dwelling type. So a single-family dwelling provides .35 yield, student yields in your homes, of your homes, in your school district versus others. And as you know, that's the basis of, of doing demographic analysis.
So the top, back to that previous one, the top half of that, when you've done studies of, and maybe you haven't, but White Bear, North St. Paul, Forest Lake, South Wa- are they comparable to those? Or can you give us any?
That's a great question. If you look at the next page, I break it down on table nine, what's the yield by dwelling type by elementary school boundary? So here's, I'll respond to your question this way. If you look under single-family dwelling, right? And you see those yields. And you asked about other districts. One of the districts which you happen to mention, that we're doing studies for, their yield on single-family homes from one school, elementary school boundary to the other, changes by four times. Yours are very similar. So it's very typical in a school district that on single-family homes, based on elementary school boundaries, we'll find as much as two to three times yield in one part of town as we do in the other side of the district, which dramatically impacts how you project enrollment versus saying all single-family homes give you a yield of .35. They don't. The other thing I would offer that you want to track is that typically when you have new developments or density developments, you're, you want to track your yields within the first or second year to make sure that they don't create a higher yield level. Right? Because that's gonna drive your projections by grade and for that building. So that's why you want to do this proactively rather than looking at this every once in a while reactively.
So if we have 85% single-family homes?
Eighty-five, yeah.
Okay. Is that typical?
That is, that is typical of, yes. If you're in an urban area, it will be different. But of a suburban district, yes.
I'm just talking about our surrounding.
Your 85% is fairly typical.
So Dennis, kind of building on your point there, townhomes and duplex, that's quite a range, because I'm looking at here .49 and then another .04.
So that's the purpose and that's the value of understanding the difference by housing type and then tracking it, because if certain housing types which have had a record of high yield get built, then we look at enrollment for that elementary boundary completely different than maybe someplace where they're not being built.
Do you use at all, and maybe the price of houses or dwellings might make that difference, do you use anything like measuring poverty level, free, reduced lunch, et cetera, where they are geographically?
Uh, we can, we can, we can locate, uh, we can locate that. But typically what districts do, quite honestly, is if we're doing work, any research on special education or free and reduced lunch, much of that information then is not in the public eye. Right? Because of the mapping. I'm doing that, I'm doing a, for another district, we're doing a detailed special education study right now. And, but that's for the office of the superintendent.
But, but do you find the, and your earlier charts referred to like the cost of homes. Does that yield as similar? Is it correlated? Is it similar or not?
If, if you're asking me, is there a relationship between housing value and free and reduced lunch? Typically, there's, I would say, there's some relationship, but it's probably, may not be as tight as you think it is. And also realizes that as a, that is probably truer for elementary. As you get into middle school and high school, that is probably less valuable. So then we take a look at, here, we're just mapping, and I know you, it's hard to read, especially on the screen, where students live compared to housing. Then what we did is we took a look at active, single-family home developments in your elementary attendance areas, townhome and condo developments in those areas, and future developments in those areas. So future developments, so the first two on this, the first two charts here are of city level approved developments. The next table is developments that are under consideration by local zoning entities that are not yet approved, that shared information with us that is possible. Question?
Sorry, I want to go back to the, the last table that we had, that, I just want to clarify. Those percents are percents of students enrolled, not total residents in the district.
Right.
Right? We don't have that data. Like what percent of people living in a single-family home choose to enroll in our schools? This is actual enrolled students, what percent and where they live.
Enrolled in Stillwater Public Schools?
Yes, okay.
So let me offer you a way of thinking about it. If, and you're gonna see market share numbers in just a bit. If your market share numbers were higher, your yield numbers would be higher.
Okay, yeah.
So this is a reflection of market share by housing type. Okay? Does that make sense?
But how about open enrollment, students who are choosing our district who live out of?
We're not, at this point, we're not tracking, we don't track open enrollment in outside.
Okay. You track how many though, right? I saw that.
Yeah, we track the numbers, but we're not tracking the open enrollment specifically within. So then when we take a look at the development, what we're actually doing is using the, and this is where I talk about, when we project, nothing changes. So you need to realize, this is like variable number one. The yields are dependent on market share current. If market share changes, the yields will change up or down, and the projections will change up and down. So typically, one of the things that we would work with a district is, where do you, what are reasonable assumptions that end up creating? If you could see, they end up creating a cone of what might be to believe. But what we're taking a look at, based upon what we see now, so we're telling you, for example, how many finished vacant units are there as of a month ago in different boundaries? How many units are under construction? How many are still vacant, undeveloped? And what might be the number of future lots in these different? And then we actually have, this bottom one is the one that we also need to track because, again, you could open up, a city council could approve opening up a development tonight. And I'm just telling you, so then it would appear here.
So Dennis, what does that, just hypothetically, what does that say for the district in Brookview? What is that table telling us?
What, what it, what it says is that if you take a look at the future developments, the future developments look like 395 within five years. That's our estimation of what's not even approved. You look up above, and you could see the numbers that we see, but most of this is not yet approved. And you're gonna see a mapping of this, of how this looks. So on the charts, what we do here is we, we locate where this developments are going on, and the number of single-family homes slotted for each of those developments, as well as townhomes and condos, and the size of the circles in relationship to the size of the project. I know these are overlaid and locked in. If I had the system up running, I could zoom in and literally see, and we've done this, literally see down to individual roads where these are located. And then the next two pages are future development potential units. And our caution is, is that if you go back in years, people remember 2008? Right? All these developments were there, then you can think of, the blue circles disappeared. Now they're coming back. Now they're coming back. So historical enrollment, then we took a look at your key, historical enrollment trends and your facility utilization. And what we're doing is dealing with potential and ideal. So when we talk about ideal, that is the capacity of a facility based upon using it for ideal educational purposes. Like we have a way that we want education to happen, and this would be our nice way to do it. The potential is, we're stuffing as many kids in as we can. Okay? So we look at ones ideal based upon your educational practices and designs, and the other is what was a potential. So we took a look at your historical enrollment in the past. So you got K-5, 6, 8, 9, 12. We took a look at the, in this case, we're looking at ideal facility utilization as of this year in the northern part, and in the south. That's based upon this year. And then we take a look at the potential, which will, numbers will be slightly less.
And is, are those numbers coming from the district?
Yes, they come from the district.
So they just define what that looks like?
So that's based upon number, use of classrooms, classroom sizes. It's based upon a lot of variables. We just ask for the number that they want us to use.
Right, okay.
So before you go on, fine, you probably said it and I missed it. The difference between ideal and potential?
Ideal is the capacity of that building based upon your education program that you want to deliver, based on class size, use of rooms, et cetera, et cetera. Potential is if you just try to maximize how many kids were in there. So what happens is that as you move from ideal to potential in terms of number of kids, that's where staff and parents start to say, hey, we're stuffed to the gills, we don't have space. Then we took a look at market share analysis. So we then took a look at, your overall market share is 71.4%. And then we differentiated by elementary, middle, and high. We also tell you that 85% of your non-resident school districts currently come from these seven districts. And K-12 non-district market share was as such. And then we took a look that just under 1,400 of your resident students are enrolled in a charter school, and over 85% of those go to the following. And you probably know this. And about 840 resident students open enrolled in a private school, and about 75% of those are enrolled in these following schools. 610 of your students open enrolled in another district, and about 85% of these are enrolled in these districts. And then what we do is we take a look at how many students are attending your elementary school boundaries, and what's your market share. So that's all grades in those elementary boundaries. This is a point I was making before, is that you have, to think about the variables, you have some age-based demographic growth, you have development, growth, or decline. And then you also have market share. Those are the variables that are really gonna impact, impact what enrollment will be in the future. So what this chart begins to look at is what's the elementary K-5 market share of total number of school-age children going into your elementary schools? And as you can see, it differs greatly from boundaries within the district. And in this case, what we did is, you can see, we actually did it by census block within those boundaries. North half, Middle school, and you can see that there's a, there's some common patterns, but there's a difference between elementary and middle school in both the northern half of both, as well as the southern half of both. And in terms of the high school, then looks different again. So again, when people talk about market share, our, we have a 74% market share, I would say, what level by what census block? And I'll give you an example. We're working with a district that wants to grow their market share. And when we sat down, I said, you only want to grow your market share in one-third of the district. Because in two-thirds of the district, you have over 85% market share. I'm like, oh, so how you do your programming, your marketing, what you do, you're, you're the most potential in certain areas. Then what we get into is projected enrollment and facility utilization. And this isn't going out five years if nothing changes. And I'll probably say that another five times. Because the purpose of strategy and planning and decision-making is to change where you need to change based upon your intentions. And then you plan from there. So if we take a look at all of this, we project out enrollment. And as you can see, projected out, enrollment does not change a great deal. And I'm gonna tell you partially because, I'm gonna go back to live birth. In your district and in the state, live birth from 2008 to 2014 dropped by 22%. Uh, we're working with districts that they have rebounded. I am working with a district right now that live birth has continued to drop. This year is lower than it was last, they're at the lowest birth in over 20 years, entire district. That low birth rate is gonna cycle through their district for the next 18 years. You have a counteractive force, which is development. And development is occurring in the middle and the south part of your district. So you're playing with both of those. So you think about it, you've got almost two different factors. Now I would offer you another factor, because you're smart, intelligent people, and you like complexity. The largest group of generations and in your, is the, is the millennials. They are also, I always tell people, the boomers, the recession ended in 2008, 2009.
So millennials are?
It's in, I can go back in here. We got the age range, I'm, I'm gonna-
Zero to 18.
Yeah, okay.
They're, I'm telling you, they are the prime years of childbirth. And they also have the most delayed birth. So I tell school districts is beware that there's been delayed birth of a large group of people, largely because for many millennials, they're still in recession. The boomers- The boomers, what recession? Work with millennials, they'll go, uh, I still can't get a job. Although now that we're down below to three and a half percent, the census among most that do this work, is that there probably is going to be a rebound, both natural and delayed. That's what you need to track. You need to know, because it could turn around. By the way, if you follow the news, look at the hospitals that have been adding back in birth beds, and, right, that they got rid of in 2010. They take them out, they put them back in. They follow the market. What we then thought might be interesting is a mapping. If we take a look at student density, where are, in a large number, where are your students located geospatially? Because you might look at all these charts and graphs and go, but where are our kids most heavily located? They're most heavily located in these areas, so in, in the blue is of low density, the highest density is in the red, moderately high density is in the orange. So in 2017, 2018, what we saw was these patterns in mid to north, and from mid to south, on page 67. So this is a way of looking at where are the highest density of our students enrolled in our district. If you take a look at 2022, and I'm going to flip back, you'll see that these changed from here in 2017, to what, go forward two pages, to what's projected in 2022. In the southern half of the district, on page 67, in 2017, go forward two pages, 69, 2022. The next, I'm just going to go through, because they're all the same. What we do here is, based upon all of this, we then provide a projection of the historical enrollment, all these factors put together, projected out five years by grade level. With the caveat, this will now be the fourth time, is that this is if nothing changes. Any planning, prioritization decisions made will have influence on these. And that's, the purpose, by the way, of doing studies like this, is actually to inform your strategies, to give you a data-informed strategies and decision-making, rather than, I don't know, or we think. Finally, I would offer you this. School districts historically have looked back after the fact. Our suggestion, and it's a pleasure to work with your team, is to suggest, you should be monitoring this several times a year, because I'd like you to think as a board, to think of leg time. If you need to build a school, it takes...
Time.
Four years, if not five. So one way to think about it from a facilities position, you're already in 2022. So the board should be looking and thinking at least three, if not four, years out, because it takes that much time typically to respond. That can be in addition, that can be of reduction. So when you look at this, a lot of this work is not a year-to-year, it is to position your administration and yourselves three to four years out. And that, and this will give you the frame of reference and some data and research that we can support you in, as well as track. So if we see major developments, just so you know what we've been asked to track, we're tracking housing. We're also tracking neighborhoods that have not had home sales in at least 20 years. That there's not many school-aged children. There's another district not far from here that we worked with years ago, and said, you better be tracking certain parts of your district, because if housing turns over, especially in low, lower housing for new families, you are going to get a much higher yield rate than you have in the rest of your district. And we suggested to them, don't sell these buildings, or don't close the schools, because you could see where that was happening. Now, that's not true everywhere. But guess what? Those homes sold in a high, dense area of moderately priced homes turned over in about six years' time. So we track both developments and pockets of where housing prices might be more typical for young families.
Was that reflected in here?
No, why, preface is, this is what we've been asked to watch, and if we see changes in these that we believe are going to impact enrollment...
Then you would bring it.
We bring it back. Or if you begin to look at issues around, or opportunities around market share, then we, we work with the team to help model that and bring that back to you. Does that make sense?
When, when you say moderately priced homes, are you talking, you gave us the averages, so would those be the below...
Below average. And as you can see from your, now you can see why we gave you all the housing stock information, because you can begin looking at the housing stock information, right? And say, if we have a bunch of very young families moving in, they might not be buying the $450,000 homes, right? But they might be looking at the 250 to 300, or the 150 to 300. That's what we begin to look at. And then we can take a look at and say, where are their pockets where there has not been many home sales? We've done this for a number of districts, where we've been able to identify what I would call areas to watch for turnover. And typically, what you'll find, guess what correlates with that in terms of age in that area? They're 65 and above. So you look for that combination of low sales and 65 and above, and you can say, oh, these might be areas to watch for housing turnover and house, and housing sales. And that's a proactive nature that we hope to offer to you. So I, I'm sure, it's like drinking out of a fire hose, there's a lot of information. We've just, as says, we've just completed this first initial review, and we've had our first initial review with administration, and was asked to just bring it to you so you're aware.
Right, and as Dennis said, there's a lot of information, so we suggest that maybe you have a learning session, and, you know, you got the, the data to look at, now he's giving you a big, broad overview. You can dig in now a little bit more after this overview, and then have a learning session to have more discussion about what some of the implications of the data that he shared might be mean for us.
I think that's a great idea.
Director Lockman?
Mr. Chisora, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the, the studies that were presented to us a few years ago, when Superintendent Puntrelli was giving us the data in terms of these projections. I was trying to do a little bit of comparison, side-by-side analysis, and so I actually wanted to ask Superintendent Puntrelli, is what has been presented here, because it seems to me that it's very consistent and validates a lot of what you had presented to us at a board at that time, just in terms of the density, the areas of growth, really where the, the pockets of those, that growth is, is situated? So I just wanted to know if you could speak to, kind of what this has meted out for you.
Right, I'd have to agree with that. I actually feel like the data that we've seen, the growth in the south is even more than we projected. An example of that, we've shared with the board, you know, the area around Brookview, we did not expect houses right away, and when we drove by last week, there are stakes in the ground in the backyard of Brookview. And so the, the growth is happening more quickly than we expected.
Because we're, we're still not seeing a robust or an emergence of growth outside of that southern part. Is that accurate to say?
Well, there's, if you look at this, there's actually two pockets of growth. And if you take a look at that, you'll see there's a pockets of growth around Brookview, and then there's a pocket of growth up in, in the Lake Elmo area. There's, there's two, there's many other developments, but if you look at the total number, they, it's a complete scale difference in those two areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I've been asked to take a five-minute recess, so we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Geez. I thought we were going to bring the new APs up.
All right, thank you very much for that brief recess. The next item is the dyslexia resolution, and I think I'll turn it over to Director Hepner. We do have one of the Sarah Leternos out there, she's been speaking on behalf of this, so I'm going to ask her to come up once you're done and talk. She has some comments about the resolution, which I think would be important for all of us to hear. But we'll start out with you, Director Hepner.
Okay. At the last meeting, I opened my mouth and said I'd be happy to write a resolution for I think the discussion that we had at the time was that we probably aren't the only school district that has an interest in dyslexia, that there were a number of other districts as, that are part of the 916 collaborative. So I put together a rough draft. Rachel Larson offered many, many suggestions to this. I, I think you'll see her handprint throughout most of it. Sent it to Chair Lehman, and it's what we have at the moment. So I don't think I need to read it, do I? Or do you want me to?
No, I think we're good.
But this is, you know, what we have on the table as a draft of a resolution to 916.
Well, maybe I can ask...
Two instead of four.
Yeah. And maybe, before I call up Ms. Leterno, Mike, can you just walk us through what will happen, next steps, if we do adopt this and it goes forward to 916?
Well, one of the things I did as soon as I saw the resolution is I contacted Superintendent Hayes at 916, because I wanted to make sure she knew of this, and she did, and also where she thought it was at at that time. And for those, I, most of you are probably familiar with this, is 916 is made up of 14 school districts. And they vary a great deal in their financial wealth, abilities, and all of those sort of things. So I'm saying, it's almost like, if you view it here, we got seven board members, and sometimes it's a challenge to, to get a consensus with seven, 14 is a challenge as well. But regardless, Superintendent Hayes wrote back to me and said that there is some interest, and she asked their special ed director, and I'm talking about the special director for 916, to talk to special ed directors. And Paul, has that happened yet, or is it in the process?
I think it's in the process, yeah.
Yeah. And, and about whether their districts have been seeing a growing need, whether there's interest. I would say this, on the board level, and we're not necessarily the first ones to know, it's, it's never been brought to the table at, at the board level of 916. So I think in terms of forward steps, if this resolution is carried by our board and is sent to them, I think that's a good step. And, and it's a step in the direction I'd like to see us go. But regardless, all of these special ed directors said they want to work first to identify some common language, identify practices that are currently in place, and that work is underway as I understand it. And she said that she would, she's going to monitor the results of what we do tonight, and they're also going to take the feedback that they get from the various directors. But I'm saying, pretty much non-committal at this point. The other thing I would say from my background that I share, is two years ago, there was a bill in the state legislature, and I think much more ambitious a bill than the one that was finally adopted. And one of the things they called for in that bill was regional resource people in dyslexia. And that didn't survive. Had they done that, there probably about seven of those spread out through the state of Minnesota. So perhaps, and again, I'm not sure where this will go, because the way services are divided sometimes, all 14 districts don't get the same services. Sometimes it, you buy the services that you want. So it might be a case where this would come to 916, and perhaps there'd be four geographical districts that are relatively close together, and they say, okay, let's us cooperate. And, and whether you go through 916, or whether you did it as some sort of cooperative arrangements, some districts, and we've had a little bit of experience with that too, some districts have a ALC or Alternative Learning Center, and it's there. And, and, and in some ways, 916 has templates for those sort of things. But I'm saying, this is not going to happen overnight, and it's not quickly. What you would hope for people who this is a key interest, and, and I would like to see, is if there's a ground swell and you've given them permission to talk, and there's a lot of interest. But at this time, it's very preliminary.
Yeah, well, and I think that's kind of what we're hoping, and it's great with your leadership on 916, that you can keep that going. So before we discuss this, I want to bring up Sarah Leterno. Most of you know, Sarah's been an advocate for dyslexia, and so she, we wanted to get her perspective on this resolution, so we keep this dialogue going forward. So, welcome.
Thank you, Board Chairman. So we have obviously seen this, read through it. I will say that I believe that this is a great start. There's a few points in here that I was thrilled to read. One is, whereas nationwide, the word perhaps, you know, we could talk about that, but as many as 15 to 20% of the general population has dyslexia, I think us first recognizing and looking at studies that have been done, and really seeing how many people suffer from this is really important, because it has long-term ramifications, you know, beyond reading and being able to read the words on the page. The second point that, you know, I think is really, it goes right to everything that we have been talking about, is that reading well by the third grade, to develop a local literacy plan, to ensure that all students are reading well by no later than the end of third grade. I think this is something that we absolutely need to take a look at, and really identify, and look at, why, why do we have such an achievement gap? Why are there gaps? Who is learning to read and who is not? And when they're not, how do we identify that and move it forward? And, you know, I have such a personal connection to this. I just know that my life's, my daughter's life would be very different today if that were different. And then the third point is that a student identified under this subdivision must be provided with the alternate instruction. This is something I haven't had a lot of conversations about, but I think this is terribly important, is making sure that kids, whether they're diagnosed or have signs, that they get the instruction they need. And that is, under dyslexia, it's a structured literacy, and our children are not getting that. And so I was thrilled to see the district recognizing that and putting that out there. Like Director Potacek said, I, you know, it, it's going to be hard to move something like this through 916. I know there've been conversations in the past, and that hasn't been fruitful, but when we are talking about something as basic, is learning to read the words on the page, I think these kids deserve the best. And so I do believe that having this resolution out there and passing this resolution will be a start and a step in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rach, I don't know if you want to touch on this resolution, or...
Thank you, Chair Lehman, Superintendent Puntrelli, members of the board. I'd like to thank Chair Lehman and Director Hepner for this idea, and also Director Potacek for supporting this, because I think this will be a great step for leadership for us amongst 916. And as Director Potacek shared, if it's not 916 who can help with this, I think it does bring conversation amongst area districts for this, because this is statewide and nationwide, as we've heard. And we need to start creating better supports and all this expertise that can help guide districts that, districts will have a tough time funding on their own. And so how do we work together to make sure that there's a collaborative, ensuring that our students are getting the structured support they need when they're starting to have reading struggles early on, and how do we support them? And I think this is a great start, and I, I appreciate your leadership if you decide to vote yes on this. I will also loop back with the 916 directors and fellow administrators in the curriculum field, and have conversations with them, because we're all... field and have conversations with them because we're all working on this together. And as Superintendent Pontrelli mentioned in her report, there's 13 districts of us who have already got together. A lot of them are outside of 916, but some of them are in, but they're greater metro districts and we're all coming together to talk about what we can do collectively and how we work with parents to make sure that we're providing what we can for kids. So your support on this would be greatly appreciated and I think it would make a really strong statement outside our 916 area as well, that this is something that we want to help lead and be a part of and support our kids and our families.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this is a report.
Quick question. I don't want it now or I don't want it public, but if you know of districts in 916.
Sure.
Like yourself who are interested or showing those signs, please send me in those school districts.
In 916.
Yeah.
Yep.
It can be both. I know very off the top of my head which are in and which aren't, but that might be helpful and fruitful.
Yep.
So thank you.
Absolutely. I will do that.
Good point. So this is a report. I'll open it up to the board if there are any conversations. I think what we'd like to do is obviously finalize this and adopt it at our next meeting so we can get this ball moving forward. So if there isn't any further discussion, if you think of something, oh, Director Pelletier.
All right. Thank you. I actually, I have a couple of questions now with regards to the conversation about 916 in general. And first of all, thank you very much, Director Patachek, for your initial work on this. I'm just curious, when you, you say that it hasn't, can you just elaborate? It hasn't been broached before with, in this capacity? And, you know, just in reading their mission statement, I'm just curious as to what is it exactly that we are supposed to be doing then if this has never occurred before? This seems like a no brainer.
Well, I'm just, the way I see it, these kinds of issues don't necessarily generate from that board. In other words, somebody at X district doesn't usually come in. Now, there are exceptions, like for example, when we had the cross subsidy and remember we had the resolution here?
Yep.
It was not only initiated here, but I did the same thing in 916. But again, that's unusual. I think perhaps Paul or Superintendent Pontrelli can tell you, programs like this, 916 doesn't necessarily tell districts what they should want. It's the other way around. Districts usually tell them, or sometimes maybe it's simultaneous.
No, I agree with that. I think, you know, 916 tries to support things that districts typically can't have a full-time person for. One of the other things I think that you had a resolution, it was some time ago, was a person to work on return on investment and work with your administration. This was before I came to look at some evaluations of your program. Most districts can't hire an R and D person themselves, so Connie Hayes brought up the idea. District said, yes, we'd love that, and so they worked together to make it happen. So I think you're spot on, Director Patachek. It's a combination of both.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, yep. So just in my marginal impatience with this, so, you know, it's a process and I guess I'm okay with that, but, you know, what do you need from us to help guide that? Do you need anything? Do you feel that, you know...
I think this is a great start.
Okay, okay.
And if the resolution passes tonight, they will look at it. I think what's nice too is even the conversation that we have tonight, I will recommend that Superintendent Hayes look at it and see that there is interest here. I think the people in our district will step forward and say, you know what? This is pretty important.
Okay.
And I don't think they're alone. What I don't know, because that discussion has not occurred at the board table, I don't know where other districts are at. But in some ways, to really hire a person like this to run the program, if you had four schools and depending on size, maybe you have a person then that could be expert or bring some expertise, some ideas, and personally, I think that'd be a wonderful resource. What's different here, if the state hadn't done it, they would have funded it. If we do it to, through 916, most likely, we'll pay whatever percentage we have of that. So I mean, that's how the costs generally are covered. But you do reap some management administrative cost because they do other programs as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Director Lachlan.
I think that question just prompted something. So will you be, if Stillwater passes this as a resolution, then will you be advocating and lobbying the other districts to also either adopt a resolution or to support the hiring and implementation?
Sure. And the answer is yes on all of those. What it will depend a little bit is the administration at 916, how they want to proceed. It will depend a little bit, how much interest is there? Like I say, boy, as I look at other programs, if you've got three, four other districts in relative proximity, I think you could pull it off. Now, if it's more than that, maybe you have more people get hired in that.
I agree with you. I think the extra districts will help because we actually asked for this a year ago from 916 when it was our district and actually Sarah and others advocating for that. And we were a little bit ahead of the curve, I think. I don't think as many people were, had it on their radar maybe, or thought it was coming later. So I think this resolution and then supporting Mike and talking to others would really help with that.
Director Hepner.
When's your next 916?
Next Wednesday. That's why I can't be in white bear.
Is there any reason why we couldn't vote on this tonight? So you could take it next Wednesday? Otherwise, we put it off till May 10th? And then your next meeting is in June?
Yeah, yeah. It's a good point. Here's what I'm thinking and, you know, I'm kind of comfortable I'll go either way. I think if you voted on it in May, it also gives 916 administrative leadership to do some of their groundwork. But I almost argue me neither way.
They've already started the wheels in motion. I mean, you've shared, Paula's shared, that the special ed directors are having conversation about it. Rachel shared that the metro curriculum directors are doing it. So I think that they are supportive of it. I don't know that you need to rush it because I think the wheels are already in motion. If you need time or, you know, I think another 10 days or a little bit more than that would be fine, so.
I think, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Director Stillwater.
I didn't even raise my hand. Thank you.
That's all right.
I think that kind of gets to, kind of close to what a thought I had about this is that I don't really understand, I mean, I don't think we really have authority to tell 916 what to do. They're a partner, we're a partner district with the other districts, but they're really a separate entity. So if we, if we make this official proclamation, the primary benefit, at least from my point of view, is that it raises awareness for the other partner districts and it's, we're talking about it now in a public forum, so I think that's all good. But we really don't have, this proclamation doesn't have really any weight on 916, whether they do anything at all. It's just raising the awareness and asking, getting the ball rolling, and it sounds like the ball is already rolling. People are talking about it. People are looking into what's possible. And then I just wanted to clarify too, if we were to partner with 916, or if 916 were to decide to provide some services, whether that's teacher training or having a staff person who can provide support, whatever that might end up looking like, we would end up paying for that as a district, probably, you know, either way. Whether we hired someone internally or whether we got that person or program from through 916, we would still be paying for that. So I guess for me, I think it's good that we're doing this. I think, as Sarah mentioned earlier, it's good to raise the awareness, but I want to make sure that we are still, as a district, you know, kind of looking at what can we do in our, internally in our own district, you know? You spoke to that a little bit earlier and I was really happy to hear that. You know, what kind of training, you know, could we be getting, you know, on the schedule for upcoming, you know, opportunities?
We already actually have that training for teachers scheduled.
Yeah, that's great. So that's good to know.
Director Lachlan.
Well, I was just going to say too, Director Hepner's point, I do think, and I see this a little differently than Director Stivlin, but I do think that especially if we are hoping that the services may be accessible to districts in the upcoming school year, that there is a, an urgency, if you will, and there, there is a time sensitivity that I think could warrant...
The only thing I would say with that...
Advancing the conversation.
Director Patachek.
Yeah, with all of that, we know it. Sometimes it's not that you don't want to do it, sometimes you can't do it. And I'm saying money drives some of those things. And so there may be other districts, and again, you know, I think some of you saw AMSD put out $100 million worth of cuts in 21 districts because of deficits and they put out the amount of money, et cetera. That's in the background too. So I'm saying that's part of those balancing things, so. And I'm not saying either way you do it tonight, I'll support it and I'll push it, but it's a case sometimes of your own personal idea on diplomacy or saying, hey, you guys better do this, so.
Director Pearson.
Well, I wonder if, because we have you on the board, can you just bring it forward and say Stillwater's going to be bringing this resolution forward? Or I expect that they will be. And because the conversation's happening, this will be just one more. Expect this to come.
And I would say I've done some of that already because I did contact Superintendent Hayes. I did tell her at that point, because I took the material off or sat and said we were going to vote on it in the 10th. If you decide to go earlier, maybe that sends a certain message too. Again, you can't force him to do anything, but you can try to convince him that you're dead serious that you want to do something on this. So be your own judge on that.
Yeah, I was going to address to Director Hepner, I don't see, I mean, I've read the policies, there isn't anything that indicates that anything that's on a report can't be acted on immediately. It's kind of a case-by-case basis. So if someone wanted to move this resolution, I think it certainly would be appropriate to do so. Otherwise, like I indicated, the normal course would be to move it from a report to an action item at the next board meeting. So I will defer to the group, but either one, we are going to keep it moving forward, so.
Director Lachlan.
Well, and I do think, again, maybe we just see it a little differently, but I do think that a board, a governing board, does provide direction to the administration. And so while it's true you cannot, of course, force anything, but you can make a compelling argument along with the other board members, right, to guide Superintendent Hayes in terms of if this is something that is, is meaningful and relevant and important and critical to each of the districts. Certainly you have the influence as a board member to help guide that direction or at least, you know, have, have that influence. I will make a motion to pass this as a resolution, to remove it as a report and to pass the dyslexia resolution to adopt tonight.
All right. And there's a motion to approve the dyslexia resolution. Do I have a second?
I will.
All right. Any further discussion? Director Stivlin.
Could I just make the suggestion that if we do leave it on the May 10th agenda, that that would give us another opportunity to talk about this if we're trying to raise awareness, if that's one of our goals, is to have this be on people's radar? Is that an advantage? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think, I think we can still talk about it, even if it does pass tonight. I think we can still, doesn't, nothing prevents us from still talking about it on the 10th or every subsequent board meeting from now on in.
We look forward to Mike's 916 update on dyslexia resolution.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
So, so really what we're voting on with this motion, I think, is whether to do it tonight or do it on the 10th.
Right. Exactly.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. With that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting the dyslexia resolution, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye. Did you get maybe higher?
I have five.
You do have five. Well, I don't know, we may have, all those opposed say, same sign?
Yeah.
Two.
And again, I think, and I can't speak for Sarah, I support this, I'll bring it forward. My only reluctance, I would have delayed it till the 10th.
And I was just going to indicate that the resolution calls for all of our signatures, I'm assuming we'll all sign it, just we all understand why you voted the way you did, so.
And Sarah, I think that's true as well.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, everybody. We have two action items on tonight. The first is the World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee roster in an open forum procedure. And I will turn it over to Director Pelletier to discuss the World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee roster.
All right. This is going to be a bit jumbled. The reason I was a little late is my printer broke at home, so I don't have any papers of what I had put together. So I'm going to read a little bit of the statute, first of all. This committee, as, as many know, we met a variety of times, had some, some pretty tough discussions and we worked our way through the issues. We looked at, we met a second time. Dr. McDowell came in and read us the statute. I'm going to read just a little bit of it, try to not read too much, but I would say the important part is each school board shall establish an advisory committee to ensure active community participation in all phases of planning and improving the instruction and curriculum affecting state and district academic standards consistent with subdivision two, this is state statute language. A district advisory committee, to the extent possible, shall reflect the diversity of the district and its school sites, including teachers, parents, support staff, students, and other community residents, and provide translation to the extent appropriate and practicable. Let's see here, I'm just going to try to, the district advisory committee shall recommend to the school board rigorous academic standards, student achievement goals, and measures consistent with subdivision 1A and sections 120B, .022, blah, blah. District assessments means, means to improve students' equitable access to effective and more diverse teachers and program evaluations. So basically, this group met, had some very tough discussions. I will say that this was a very tough decision. We, we had unbelievably qualified candidates. We initially came to 18 that we had, we did like a top 1 to 25. And the three of us, and that would be Director Pearson and Director Patachek, had instantly 18 candidates who were on our top 25. So that was unanimous instant consensus. The next subsequent five took a little bit of time. So what did we do for that? We looked at the qualities of, the characteristics of the people that we had in our initial list and we went from there. What were we missing? At the time, we were missing male qualities, or I'm sorry, we're missing men. We were looking at the ages and we ended up with elderly people, young families, no children, children, everywhere education-wise, from master's degree, bachelor's degree, high school degree, no degree, parents with, again, no kids. In every part of the district, north, south, the central part of the district, we looked at what type of skill set, what type of employment do these families have? Are they business owners? Are they, do they have blue collar jobs? Do they have white collar jobs? Are they stay-at-home parents? Up and, we went quite exhaustively through this list to try to make this the most diverse group as we possibly could. The three of us all had to make concessions. It was tough. It was tough. We had really tough discussions and we also had, by the way, in addition to the families' kids in the district, we also had, we also took credence in a characteristic of a family with kids that don't have kids that attend our district schools. All of these qualities mattered and we felt that they presented a diverse group within the overall group that applied. There are some things missing and the one that sticks out the most is diversity of color. We tried, we did our best with what we had, and I would like to charge all of us to intentionally address this from here on out. I think it's a macro level issue in our district. It's not just this one... not just this one, it's just not this one situation, I think we need to address this on a macro level. So, with that, I think that's what I had, I had it much more eloquently written, but I don't have it, so if anyone else in my group would like to make a comment, and then we can move to a motion, questions or comments prior to that.
Director Pearson.
I'll just say a couple things, thank you for that, I think we also had a sheet that kind of broke down whether they were community members and parents, and so just to share with the board, we had 15 community members, six parents, we have four students, and then two staff members, with the caveat that we have several staff members as listed that will be resources, and then just to address the diversity, because it was hard to tell on paper, we have one parent of children of color, and then a grandparent, so there, we have three, and then we want to be really intentional about that, two of our students will be in that category, so that will bring the total to five out of 27, which is 18.5%, which is reflective of that number that we have in our district, so we did talk a lot about that, we worked really hard to come to a good, have a good solution in that, and I think, like Director Pelletier said, we need to make that something that we are intentional about in the future, but I feel like this is a good start, and we did work really hard to come up with a good number, and we did all give up some of our top people, but feel good about the group we have.
Thank you very much, Director Patachuk.
And if I can, and one thing I'd share there is, when Mr. McDowell came to see us, he shared actualities in numbers of people in the district and our kids, so I think with those numbers, we met the quotas, so to speak, and we weren't always stuck to that, but I'm saying, you know, it's one thing to put this long list that Jennifer went through, it's another one to go out and operationalize it and say, okay, now how do I get those bodies and how do they balance off? Again, we had 48 very, very strong candidates, and for the most part, in some cases, we knew some, but nobody knew them all, and so anybody who did, we talked about it, and like I say, the original part of it, the first two-thirds went pretty easy, because we just said, who do you have, and who do you have, and in that part, we went, the last third were more challenging, because again, we come with three different perspectives, and so we talked about that, and sometimes it was very cordial, and sometimes it wasn't, and so there was some.
Always.
But also, regardless, what we did is, I think if you look at the 25 as a composite, it was a good balance, and I'm saying, we agreed very, very early, part of it was going to be that it was a two-year commitment, they would serve an advisory role to the Board of Education, and we had a wide range of talent, and those who aren't selected might be better than those of some who were selected, but part of the charge was balance, part of the charge was new faces, and we worked hard to do that, but also, of those who aren't chosen this time, that's our backup pool, these people don't know, I have not told anybody, you're on this committee, or you're favored on this committee, that's yet to happen, so maybe when we actually decide on that group tonight, and those people are contacted, you never know, some people might say, I no longer can serve, or no longer want to serve, but that's my reflection.
Director Stivlin.
I have a couple questions that I'm hoping maybe the committee, somebody from the committee can answer, first of all, I want to say thank you to all three of you for being so committed to making sure that we, this is the first time we've done this, and it's new, and it's really important, it's going to be incredibly valuable to have this group advising us as a board, and I think you guys, it sounds like you did a really good job of really trying to make sure that we get this group as good as we can possibly get it for the first year, first time out, so a couple questions, can you just kind of clarify, how long will these, this group of people be serving, how, what will exactly, kind of what will they be doing, will they report, how will they report to the board, like, are they going to be coming here and giving us a report at some point, or do we not know that yet, and then how will we get the next group, you know?
Phil, jump in whenever. You know, being, there's no precedent to this, right, there is no precedent in this district, so what we have discussed, and let me know if I'm missing something, is, you know, let's get the group going, we have the, we call it the, kind of the resource team, these are the additional staff members that you see on the sheet that are not, staff resource team members, that are not part of that group that applied, but they're going to guide the information and the charge of, you know, informing the people what World's Best Workforce is, what are their tasks to do, and that first meeting, where that's going to primarily be the focus of that first meeting, and to be very honest with you, I think we're just, this was, this was an epic task that we took on, and I think now we're ready to just move on to that next step with some of those intricacies, but the term is a two-year term for now, and my biggest concern, to be brutally honest, is what do we do with the excellent applicants that didn't get chosen, because that's what made it so difficult, because they were all fabulous.
Yeah. Well, I think if you look at the action item, it sets out the role the group is to provide advice to the school board, and help engage the public in the district's work to ensure all students are career and college-ready, Stillwater's World's Best Workforce Plan meets the goals of the Minnesota World's Best Workforce Legislation, to ensure every school, district, and the state is making strides to increase student performance, the advisory meets quarterly and is charged with understanding the World's Best Workforce Plan, making recommendations for the plan, and working to engage the community in plan development, conversations revolve around how our community and schools can equip our students to be life-ready, so.
That doesn't entirely answer my questions, or maybe not yours either.
No, but that's really good, I'm glad you read that.
Yeah.
Chairman. Well, and I was just going to say, too, Dr. McDowell is very well-versed in this, and will be a really key player in getting this team off the ground, and I think we'll see, it comes to, we've talked about it a lot, how much we're going to hear from the group, what it's going to look like going forward.
Yeah, I think specifically what will happen, the first, the first thing that the group will end up having to decide is what do they want that annual report to look like that they give, because moving forward, now that we have this group in place, it'll be the charge of that group to provide the annual report that doesn't happen at a board meeting, because that's one of the things under statute, it's supposed to be its own community report, the other big charge will be that last section that Chair Lehman read, which was, how do you continue to get additional input from community members, that's a big charge of what this advisory group does, so moving from now through this time next year, the idea is really to get that first group up to speed, in understanding all the intricacies of how the World's Best Workforce fits together with things like curriculum planning, professional development, and that's why that resource team is there, is to kind of help bridge that, so that by the time we get, again, to this point in next year, that group will be able to be in a position to be making recommendations with regard to the goals in the five areas, and we've talked about that a little bit, and we can talk about that more, I think, as we move in the next 12 months, about what does that look like, how does it fit together, what do we want that to be focused on at the board level, and then that team hopefully will be ready to go, but it really is just figuring out how to do World's Best Workforce Committee as a community group.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, I think, oh, Director Lachlan.
So, thank you very much, I know that this, you know, you've been providing updates over the last couple months, I know how diligently this group, this subcommittee has been working, so thank you, I know it was no easy task to cull through the different applications and really come up with a group that best met your criteria, so thank you for that. You know, I, like many of us up here, have been on district committees for a number of years now, and I think that there's a systemic issue that our district has a real opportunity to address in terms of how we do cultivate and gather a group of individuals together, and really being mindful of the unseen impact that these systems and decisions have on different subgroups and stakeholders in a group, especially those who are at the margins and whose voices are underserved and underheard, and so I think, when I think about diversity, in terms of diversity of thought, diversity of experience, I'd be really interested to know, you know, ability, do we have those who are differently able, do we have those of veteran status, do we, those have different gender identity expression, you know, those truly in the non-dominant culture, and I sometimes get really weary and very concerned when I hear that, you know, that the onus is somehow put on, put upon people who haven't come to the table, and I agree wholeheartedly with Director Pelletier, that's on us as a district and as a board, to make sure we are really actively and intentionally and authentically inviting participation, not to meet quotas, but to know that it really is, the more diverse group that we have, the better, the stronger, more fruitful and beneficial product it will yield, because that is what is going to make sure we are serving each and every child, and so I just have concerns about, you know, again, the, not of any individual, I know very few individuals on this list, I have no doubt that they are all fine and well-qualified, and I think we need to expand the scope in who we are intentionally asking to be part of, part of this process, and asking who benefits, and who's disadvantaged, and whose voices are we simply not hearing time and time again, so that's just some of my thinking around, not the compilation of the group of people, but in terms of how we are really intentionally actively seeking out the most diverse group possible.
Director Patachuk.
I think that's very, very legitimate, I think the fact, we became very aware of it, and it was really kind of a question, how far do you go out and recruit, and even the staff that's on there, and even listening to George Nolan tonight, I have the feeling George can help us with that in the future, I think this is a great start, it was interesting, because I even found at the partnership plan, there were some people at my table who had applied, but I couldn't tell them if they made it or not, but I discovered a little more diversity there as well, and so even as we look at the question, it's hard, because as our questionnaire was, I can't in the questionnaire say, and by the way, are you, would you be a good diverse representative, and some, like race, it's easier, and some, it's more elusive, but ethnicity comes out there, so Paula, I think you're very, very right, I think this is an area we need to be more vigilant and more proactive, and I think, especially now, that's going to happen, and I think Shelley and Jennifer would agree with that as well.
Right.
Director Lachlan.
Thank you, so, and I think Director Pearson spoke to it, but I just, again, I'd be really mindful that we, when we're selecting, because in a very, like I said before, in a very authentic way, and that we're not, I've just seen too many of these committees where people are being tokenized, and I just, I'm very fearful that, you know, this is not going to be, you know, I want it to be a very productive and a very welcoming and affirming space for every person in their fullest expression of themselves, and just making sure that we're just being really mindful and authentic, I know there had been conversation about trying to, you know, add on, and I just, and I have some concerns about that, and I think it's, again, just more of the board's mindset of how we're approaching it, is it seen as a value add, or is it seen as something that we have to do, and I think the latter is, we just really have to check ourselves in how we're approaching this work.
Director Pearson.
Well, and I would just reiterate that I think we all agree, and that we worked really hard to make sure we were getting the most diverse group possible in every way, and so I think, we only have so much in front of us, and we can ask different questions next year, but from what we had in applications, this is a very diverse group in many ways, and I think we have some with master's degrees, and we have some without college, and some with trade, and so I think we did, we had this grid of different areas, and we marked it all off, so we did work really hard to try to cover those areas, and we can talk next year if we want to have other areas on there that we want to ask, because some we just had to try to figure it out from the application, but I think that is our goal, and that is our desire, so I think we would agree with you.
Director Hebner.
My question isn't so much about the folks on the committee, but I do have a question, and maybe Dr. McDowell can answer this, it says in the summary here, advisory meets quarterly and is charged with understanding World's Best Workforce Plan, is part of that also understanding Reimagine Minnesota, or is that looked at as something totally separate?
I'm hoping that that doesn't go away, because what we have built into the plan that we put forward for next year is actually the pieces that we've integrated from each of the components of Reimagine Minnesota into the 18, 19 World's Best Workforce Plan in each one of the five areas, and in fact, as we were, after we met at our learning session about the strategic planning piece, and took that back, we've retooled even how we call out more overtly Reimagine Minnesota inside of the strategic planning document that then feeds into the neck, the subsequent pages of World's Best Workforce in each area.
So, these folks will be introduced to?
It'll be part of it.
Director Lachlan.
I just want to respond to Director Pearson, if I might, Shelley, I hope, you know, I am not arguing the merits of the work that, and effort, I'm merely suggesting and stating that the systemic root cause of even just perhaps the application, or the application process itself is, needs to be examined, so that we can, we can make sure that, because in some, in some cultures, it is considered extremely disrespectful to, or seen as, you know, not so modest, if you will, to nominate yourself to be on such a committee, I would, I think I asked this before the committee, I'd be really interested to know how many languages this was translated into, are the meeting times going to be during the day, are they going to be at night, is childcare going to be provided, so I think being able to just really look again at all the barriers and the systemic barriers that exist within the process, I don't doubt for a minute the work that was put in or the effort, I'm just looking at more systemic, we're looking at the framework, what are some of the barriers that we know exist, and how can we do better next time?
Director Pelletier.
So, I feel strongly that we're actually all on the same page, and we're saying the same thing, I think we talked about this ad nauseam as well, you know, are we even reaching out to every facet of our district in the manner in which they would receive information, and I couldn't answer that question, you know, we, again, did the very, very, very best with what we had in front of us, based on the statutory requirements, and I believe with 100% conviction that we did that, I, Director Lachlan, I believe that your statement is exceptionally valid, and I think that outside of this one advisory group, I think it's much bigger than that, I think it is, I think that, you hit on something that we need to tackle on a macro level, because this is one piece of it, and I would argue that possibly every piece of it is missing, so I don't know what we do with that, but I do think we need to handle, how are we actually reaching certain pockets of the population that may not be receiving information in a typical way?
Oh.
Typical according to?
More than welcome to say.
Well, and respectfully, Director Pelletier, I think for me, that is cause and reason enough to be mindful and to go back, and it will be uncomfortable, and it will be more work, absolutely, but just in hearing what you said, I think that is, for me, is just cause enough of why we open up the pool of candidates to make sure that we are doing our best, and it is, it's going to be cumbersome, it's going to be, like I said, more work. to, and it is, it's going to be cumbersome, it's going to be, like I said, more work. But if it yields more perspectives at the table that are ultimately going to benefit more of our children, then I think it's worth it.
Director Pearson.
Thank you. And I'd just like to push back that I think this is a really good start and going forward, we're never going to have it perfect. So I think this is a great start going forward. We can have conversations about how we do a better job at this, but I think to try to go back at this time and open it up, we have 47 people who are waiting to hear back already and to keep pushing them off, I think is unfair. So I think that would be my recommendation that we, going forward, be even more intentional than we were, but I think we need to get this moving.
No, and I hear that. I just remember an email that I had sent to the committee just, and one of the committee members had responded, well, why don't you just wait until the, the recommendation comes, comes forward and then you can have the conversation? So all I'm doing is responding to that request in terms of, because now we have a list. I think that, you know, there, there could have been opportunity for us to, to be a little more expansive in, in the search.
I have a question of, sorry.
No, Director Pelletier.
I don't know who to ask this question to. Are we under some kind of a timeline with this group? Because I feel, and here's, I feel that we, this particular community engagement group, which again is unprecedented, this, everything that we've done here. So are we under some sort of a timeline statutorily that where we have to get the group going? Because again, we've put the current people off twice now. So I guess I'm, I'm wondering that.
So I don't? Dr. McDowell? Well, with regard to statute, you're, I mean, that's, that's been in place. You are where you are with that. Do we have a plan? The, the beginning of this group does not impact our World's Best Workforce Plan for the upcoming year, is what I can tell you. The, the sooner you put a team together, the more opportunity you have for the team to meet is about the best I can answer the question.
Yeah.
Tom?
I just make sure, does that answer your question?
I don't know what to tell you otherwise. I mean, you're, the question was, is there a statutory reason to do it? And I can't give you the answer to that. Is it going to impact our ability to do the work as we've kind of negotiated back and forth of how do we transition between administration and this group doing it? The honest answer is it doesn't impact that at this point. It's just, but it's, it's the ability to have it, I guess I would say this way, if you, how soon do you want to get that group together and get that group starting to get their work done is what the question I think you have to wrestle with.
Yeah, Tom.
Go ahead, Mike.
A couple of things on this. Number one, did we try to be timely? Yes. Originally, we had set a first meeting date for April 17th. April 17th has come and gone. And, and did we go back and review and restart? Yeah, we did some of that. And, and again, we, we weren't trying to speed along carelessly. We were trying to be very methodical. And part was to build a consensus with our group. But again, I think we've heard a lot. I've heard a lot of concerns. I think we're getting close to the end of the year. So there's a certain function where if you try to pull a group together like this in the summer, wow. And so if you could at least pull off an original meeting in May, which is going to be a challenge in itself, I think that's a good target. I think if you push it out beyond that, in some ways, you are our fallback. There'll always be a plan and it'll be timely and it'll be done. The point is, the sooner you engage the community and start to develop them, I think the better you're off in the long run.
Director Hepner.
Can I call the question?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. The question's been called, so with that, there is an action item. So could I get a motion to approve the World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee roster?
So moved.
I second.
All right. In second, and so we have a motion by Director Stivlin, seconded by Director Patachek. Any further discussion? All right. All those in?
I'm sorry.
I don't think you can if I've called the question, to be honest with you.
You can't make a discussion?
I don't think you can continue discussion. I think that's the purpose of calling the question, but I don't know Robert.
Yeah, but I think what you, what you have to do really to close off discussion takes two-thirds.
You call the question, you make a second and then you can discuss.
Yeah, it just, so why don't we do this? There's a motion to call the question. All those in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we have a vote on the overall motion, which is to approve the World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee roster. All those in favor of that signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much for that discussion and I'm assuming Barb, you'll notify these people by email? Is that how it was going to go out or?
Whatever the committee directs me to do, I'm happy to do it for them.
Okay. Is that how we would like to do that? Committee, would you like to go by email?
I apologize. What was, what was the question?
We're wondering how you want to notify these people.
I think that we, we had talked as a committee that we wanted to craft a letter, you know, kind of from, from the three of us that we were going to work on and send out to the?
Yeah. And we have a first draft already.
Okay.
All right. So then the, for those people who are on this roster, you'll be getting a letter from the committee notifying you of that, of your acceptance onto the World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee.
Director Stivlin asked that we have that from the entire board, which I think is just fine.
Sure. Yeah, I think that's better. Yes.
And the others get notified too, you said?
Yes.
Same letter.
Just let them.
Same letter.
Wondered.
All right. Onto the next action item is the open forum procedure and I'll turn that over to Director Hepner.
The Policy Working Group, of course, has been working diligently and this doesn't happen to be a policy. What is being proposed tonight is the prologue to our open forum. As we talked about the 200s, which have to do with school board work, we, we saw the line as part of, I don't even remember what, what particular policy, but anyhow it said, personal attacks by anyone addressing the school board are unacceptable. Persistence in such remarks by an individual shall terminate that person's privilege to address the school board. And then we looked at what was preceding that in our prologue. And we do have language in paragraph two that says, we will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. So the staff and students, we felt were covered there. We wanted to keep the first sentence in the current language because we are modeling civil discourse for our community. Speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Then we wanted to kind of, I guess, move things forward a little bit. We think that there have been personal attacks and I understand the open forum speakers' comment talked about the difference between attack and, and criticism. Personal attacks by anyone addressing the school board are unacceptable and persistence in such remarks by an individual shall terminate that person's privilege to address the school board. While I would agree that personal attacks can be subjective, I would say that vulgarity, character attacks, malice are also objective, subjective, and that's what we currently have in our language. I guess what we wanted to get away from here, and it, I understand that this is going to put a burden to, to some extent on the board chair because he or she will have to make the decision about what constitutes a personal attack. But we felt that that was what we wanted to get to, to kind of stop some of the continual, what we felt were personal attacks and had crossed over from just specific complaints. We wanted to go beyond staff and students. And so we bring this forward as a possibility and the other folks on the Policy Working Group can speak to it as well.
Thank you, George. Director Stivlin.
Yeah, I think, I just want to clarify the concept of personal attack. We, we did have some very interesting, I think, discussion around that concept of what makes, what determine, what is an attack and what is a criticism? And we certainly don't want to be in, we don't want to limit free speech in any way, but we do want to remind people that we're here as a collective unit, as a board representing the good of the district. And when we invite people to open forum, we want to hear ideas and thoughts and feedback about us as a whole board or as a whole district. And so when you single out one person, often that isn't really something that is related to what we're doing here. And so we don't want to waste the community's time. We don't want to waste our time. We're here to do important work. And so it's not as much about personal attacks like somebody being mean or saying, you know, harsh things. It's about taking issues that should be at a big level, district-wide level, and bringing it down to talking about one person. And while that sometimes may be appropriate, depending on what the person's talking about, that's, that's another way to look at this idea of personal attacks, that we all want to be here to, to make our schools better. So we just, that's the focus of the purpose of, of the open forum and of all of us being here. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much. Director Patachek.
Question, as I read it, this is personal attacks on anyone?
So that would cover any board members. So we already have Minnesota statute that basically covers staff and students, which cannot be called out by name. And if they are, we have to gavel them silent immediately. But everyone else has been sort of not really specifically addressed. And so we want to make sure that we're also saying that's any board member or any community member that, that might come up in the open forum. Do you want to speak to that at all?
Oh, yeah. So I'm part of that committee and I think that, so as Director Stivlin said, we did talk about kind of what is that differentiation between someone coming up and stating facts? And, and even if they invoke a name, does that somehow, you know, characterize it now as a, as an attack of personal nature? And, you know, I struggle with this one because I think that as an elected official, by and large, we have put ourselves out there and, you know, the public has a right to say what they want. We don't have to like it or agree with it, but that's, that kind of, you know, comes with the territory. I, I feel strongly that other people, the, the private sector, the public, they, they really don't deserve to have their names thrown out in a public open forum without a chance to rebut or, or, you know, a chance to respond. At the same time, you know, an argument can be made that this is our board meeting. We conduct the, the business in a manner that we feel adheres to what we are trying to accomplish and that, you know, it's our right to, to establish those parameters as we see fit. So I, I struggle with this because I think that, you know, no one wants to limit free speech and we don't want it also to become a conduit and an outlet for people to air their personal grievances about any one of, one of us to a point where it just starts to become a distraction from what we're here to do and serve kids.
Anyone else?
One, one last point, and I also struggle with the free speech. I'm wondering, could we put in a pilot, say do this for three or four months, see how well it goes or doesn't go? And, and then bring it back to the board again to say, okay, is it working? I would suspect in the meanwhile, that some speakers may come at open forum and, and share with us if they feel that their hands are tied or their lips are sealed or whatever. That way, in other words, I'm saying, I like aspects of this, but I'm also, when you start putting restrictions on, on these things, sometimes they're, it's a slope. And so I would love to see this, but with, say, three, four months, we'll try and revisit.
I guess my concern is, I agree with you, Mike. It is a very slippery slope. I think it puts an undue burden on the board chair, whoever that person is, to decide whether or not they're in agreement with the speaker or not, and then try to weigh whether it is a personal attack or a criticism. You know, that, that's something, I don't know if, when you decide to be board chair, if that's something you really want to take on. You know, what one person thinks is respectful is not another person's and, you know, we, we all ran for this. We all knew what we were getting into. We've all sat up here and, and received the criticism by the community, which they have every right to do. My, my thought would be, I guess I would like to flesh out more, because I'm the board chair now, but going forward, what people think would be a personal attack? You know, if you have examples, it might be easier for someone to then gavel that person and say, you know, this is an example that we as all seven of us have decided is a personal attack. Because again, I don't want it to be my role to say to someone who's coming up here to speak that I personally find that a personal attack and six of you may say it's not. And, you know, that, that is not my role, that is not what I want my role to be. So that's, that's my thought. I just, I just have concern that, you know, I would hope we all model respectful behavior. But again, it's in the eye of the beholder as to what, what that is. You know, if, if you're the one having to endure the criticism, you know, you may think it is a personal attack. If you're not, you may think, well, that's just normal criticism. So I don't fault anybody for trying to go through this because we've all been down the road, but I, I just, I just have a real issue with, one, the chair being the dictator of what's model behavior and then also the idea that we live in a democracy that says you have the right to criticize. And so that's my two cents on the matter. Director Pearson?
So I, I agree with that and I, I'm not sure what the best answer is because I also want to have free speech. And I don't know how we distinguish between one person's criticism and I think it's going to be that the person whose name is called out is going to feel attacked. And so who's to say that is an attack or that's not an attack? I think what we're maybe trying to get at, it feels like, is how do we, how do we have open forum in a way that we can do something good out of? You know, sometimes it feels like what's brought to us, we can't do anything about it, it's not helping our work. So how can we make it help the work that we're trying to do, but still allow people to, to be able to share with us? And I don't have an answer.
Director Pelletier.
I want to thank the group for raising the issue. It's a tough issue and I commend you all for taking time on it. I guess for me, the way I look at it, I, I think the current verbiage as well as the proposed verbiage are, are pretty similar in that they're both, they, they can both be construed in a subjective manner. And I really appreciate what you said, Chair Lehman, because I, I do think, to put that kind of onus on any chair, that's a really tough spot. For, for me, you know, I've researched this as well. You know, a lot of districts don't even have forums. It's, it's a privilege. And for me, it's about the kids. It's about the kids in the room. It is about the children sitting at our table. And, and what kind of a, a role are we, you know, what kind of example are we showing them by this behavior? So I guess I, I'm more of, of inclination to say, you have every right to say whatever you would like, barring whatever, whatever statutorily is inappropriate. But even, again, this is off topic, but moving it at the end of the, the meeting and let the children leave. Truly, for me, it's all about the children. So those are my comments.
Director Stivlin.
I'm, I'm kind of, I'm curious about this idea that as the chair, it's not your role and your right to maintain order in this room. And I know that's not easy when you have someone speaking, you don't want to tell them they have to stop. Obviously, that's not easy, but isn't that your role?
Well, I'm not saying it's not my role. What I'm saying is, I, I don't feel comfortable to say to someone who's come up to that podium, taken time out of their day and wants to criticize me, criticize anyone on this board, that I have the power to say, you know what, that's a personal attack. I'm going to say you don't have the opportunity to speak.
Well, I do.
I don't want that responsibility. That's, I want the responsibility that says by law, if you go and talk about students or staff, then, you know, the law says you don't get to. But I don't want to be able to, to try to define what is a personal attack and what is criticism. I don't think that's my role. I don't think anyone would want that responsibility.
Especially if you're not going to have the support of the full board, because that's where I think it can really yield even more division, right? So, if any one of us was chair and cut someone off because we felt it was a personal attack and then knowing that we did not have consensus, like you said, we hadn't identified or established, okay, that does constitute a personal attack, and now we have, you know, how many of us out there, can you believe what our chair, and it just further perpetuates, I think, a kind of divisiveness that is not going to be productive.
Director Pearson?
So, I know any of us could be board chair, but which, would it, would it be helpful for you, you know, what Director Patachek said to try it and see? And if we tried it and you're like, I hate this, it's not working, I don't know when to make the judgment call? Or, you know, would you feel better about having a trial period where we could see if it works or not?
I don't know what it gets you. I mean, I guess I would feel more comfortable if we had examples of where you thought, the board thought this crossed the line and, and any board chair should cut it off. I, I think we could have a discussion at a learning session saying, you know, we've all sat up here now, some of us for seven years, some of us for two years, some of us for coming up on eight months. Here's what I've heard, here's where I think this crosses the line, have the discussion amongst all of us so that we're all on the same page, so that I don't have to look when someone's speaking saying, eh, what do you think? And we just, we just know. You know, and you're not going to come up with every example, but I think it would sure help whoever's going to sit in this chair next to know that, you know, if I take a position that I know the community is going to be against because I feel it's the right decision, they're going to come up here and they're going to say, you know, you're an idiot and blah, 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 whatever. And I, I'm going to have to either sit there because I know that the majority is going to say, you know, you have to take it or not. So, I, I like the idea of trying it. I guess I would like to try it after we've come up with some examples of where this board thinks it crosses the line.
Director Stivlin.
Wouldn't we, any of us be able to call like point of order or something like that if we felt that there was a need, like, you know, hey, this is, this is not going in a direction that seems productive?
But it still comes down to the discretion of the, of the board chair to make that decision of, appreciate what you said, I don't think it is. And then I have the division between myself and whoever decided and they thought it crossed the line.
Director Loughlin.
What about the use of names? Because I do agree with what Director Stivlin said that, because none of us as individuals has any power. It's only when we're here as a collective in this, in this capacity that we have, you know, any authority as a cohesive unit. So, for someone to come up and, you know, invoke one person's name, to Sarah's point, doesn't really, you know, isn't really accomplishing much. So, what about if we eliminated the use of, of, of personal names? I think personal names in the community, personal names, I know it's, it already encompasses staff and students, but that would then broaden the scope to, to board members, the use of individual names, or laypeople out in the community so that their names are not going to be, that's just a thought to offer.
Director Patachek?
See, the part I struggle with, and that's why I call, talk about a slippery slope. Somebody can come up here and say, you know what, what you did last time and the position you took on that resolution for 916 was a foolish act and this is why. And say they said it just like how I've said it. I don't regard that as a personal attack. I view that more as a disagreement. And so, and Tom, I've sat sometimes and played quarterback when I heard somebody saying something and said, oh, they shouldn't have been cut off or they should have. And, and the hard part of it is sometimes people vary in their tolerance and sometimes you or I may sit there and say, I got to hear a little more first. And other people are saying, boy, you should have cut them off five minutes ago. So, I'm saying, if, if I have to air, and I've been this, I, I don't think anybody up here who has any experience is some, where I said, okay, boy, I'm getting slapped around tonight. And I'm saying, okay, that's fine. I can.
Yeah, no, that's why I, you know, the bright line is, I've got a statute that says you can't talk about a teacher, you can't talk about a stat. That's, that's it. There isn't anything else other than that, so.
Director Hapner? I don't, I disagree with you, Mike, on that. I don't think you should have to sit here and be slapped around. That doesn't make any sense to me. I, I think you're up here on the board and I'm reading earlier in the prologue, we welcome input from citizens that fosters better decision-making and improve learning experiences for all students. That's the purpose of open forum, to me. If it's doing that, fine, the person can have their five minutes or whatever time we put on it. If they aren't doing that and it's going in a different direction, that to me is even more important than the current or the proposed language down below. Is it fostering for us better decision-making and does it improve learning experiences for students? If not, why are you here? Why are you talking? It's, it's our meeting, these are our guidelines, that's what should be there. And, you know, I probably, as board chair, was remiss in not gaveling some, some folks who weren't dealing with that because that got lost in the, you can't talk about staff or students, you know, that, and that's really a huge, there's a reason why that's the topic sentence in that paragraph, you know? I mean, maybe that's what we should be paying attention to, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe that's what the guiding principle should be.
Did you have something?
Director Stivlin?
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have something? Director Pearson?
Yeah, mostly I agree with, you know, for me, it's easy to say I don't want community members' names called out. There's no reason for it. We can't do anything about it. We can't help. And I do think we should be able to take a little more as elected officials, but you're right, if it's not serving any fruitful purpose, then what's the point? But how you, how you project that and what we say, I don't know what the right answer is for that. Because I like the spirit of what we're getting to, but at the same time, I, I want people to be able to feel like they can bring, like, I didn't like, I didn't agree with that vote that you took. So, I don't know.
Yeah, and I agree. I think, you know, but that would be a productive thing, saying, you know, as a citizen out here, I disagree with the, the decision you made, you know, and here's why. But I really am intrigued by your idea, Director Loughlin, about the idea of not using names because I think that still gives a person quite a bit of flexibility to talk about something in a specific way, but just simply don't use the names. And maybe that makes it less of a, a personal attack. I don't know. I like that idea. At least we would have a specific thing that, that Director, Chair Lehman, you would be able to say, oh, that's a name, okay. It's a clear line in the sand, you know? That would make it easier.
I was trying to think, was that a compliment or an insult? Tell me.
You know, the Policy Working Group will be meeting again too soon, I'm sure, but how about we table this and we'll go back with the Policy Working Group and try to hammer out something else because obviously we're kind of spinning here.
Plus, we want to see how the draft's going.
Can I just add one more?
Director Stivlin?
I appreciate that, absolutely. We'll take, we can take it back to the committee, but if any of the rest of you board members would have thoughts after this and want to weigh in and maybe email some of the things you've even said tonight, I think it would be helpful when we're in that conversation to say, okay, here's, here's what we know, here's what we don't know. That might help.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah. So, could I have a motion to table this?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye opposed, motion carries. All right. Next, board reports. Board chair report. I have a couple of items. One, I had the privilege of attending the partnership party with some of our other board members. Great evening, well-received. This was the first time they were at the JX Event Center. Great opportunity to be in Stillwater. I liked the other venue, but it was neat to be closer to home. I thought it was a little more intimate, too, and thank you for all the people that volunteered things. They raised a ton of money. Thank you for all the people that donated to our school district. Heard a lot of great compliments about the yoga program and expanding that, so I think that's what really excites the community is seeing new ideas that are being developed and used in our district and mainly for helping kids learn better. So, congratulations to that. We also had a learning session with regards to the strategic planning process. That is available on the website. And then we also had a board working session on finance again, which will continue. That also is on the board website. With that, I'll turn it over to board member reports and I'll start with you, Mike.
Yep, two real quick ones. We had a number of board members go to Pankamo and take a tour. I had gone through it before. This is for probably our most challenging needy kids and it's an elementary school. And I'd seen it before, but there's nothing like kids being in the building and then you get a better grasp of, of how the everyday works. And I think Sarah was there, Tom was there, and Denise Cody?
Yep.
Was there as well and, and I, I learned a lot. The other thing I would mention is this C general membership meeting was last Friday and particularly there was a discussion about mental illness. NAMI is the organization and Sue Aberter Holden was there. And this is the National Alliance on Mental Illness and it was dedicated to improving the lives of children and adults with mental illness and their families. And I know a lot of people here are much more connected than I am here, but it was impressive and, and it's not going to go away. This is something we all need to keep working on and become more literate about, so.
Okay. Thank you. Director Loughlin?
No reports tonight.
All right, thank you. Director Pelletier?
Okay, so, because I get this mixed up all the time, this is just board reports, not working group?
This is board reports followed by working group.
Okay, so I'll just do a quick AMSD at our last meeting we had. So, to the gentleman who spoke earlier, we had a presentation on safety in schools and it was, actually Director Patachek and Director Stivlin were there as well. It was, it was fabulous and I think we've been talking behind the scenes a little bit about that, bringing this to the board level, so more to come on that, I think. Secondly, I had the opportunity to participate in the 2018 scholarship process for graduating seniors. I'm so thankful to have been given this opportunity and I will tell you, sorry, that it was incredibly difficult to choose the candidates. I will also say that every single solitary candidate was worthy of such recognition and it was immensely difficult to have to choose. My takeaway, I learned something from the students who applied. I learned that in their own individual ways, they are worldly, they have depth, they have character, they're loving, they are kind, and they definitely want to leave this world a better place. We should be proud of these applicants and of all of our graduates. Not proud because they excel academically, athletically, or musically, proud because of the good human beings we are raising, because that is the most important legacy of all and it is something we must strive to work towards in this great community of ours. And lastly, to the staff who was there in the room that day, I heard nothing but supportive comments for six straight hours towards the students, towards each other, and even for their superiors. The tears in the room that day were genuine tears of gratitude and caring. It was glaringly clear to me that despite its imperfections, the overall culture of caring at Stillwater Area High School was there in spades. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Director Pearson?
I have nothing.
All right. Director Hapner?
You have the Emid April meeting minutes. I just want to hit on one thing. We have turned over to the Personnel Committee at Emid, the responsibility for contacting Mr. Ken La Croix, who has agreed to work in our superintendent search. We gave the Personnel Committee an amount of money that could be spent for his services and they will work with him on a timeline that would hopefully hire a replacement for Dr. Lukey by December 31st, 2018, although she will work until June 30th, 2019. It is hoped that the new hire would be able to spend some time on the job with Dr. Lukey. And the rest of the meeting is in your notes.
Thank you. Director Stivlin?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I did attend the AMSD with the rest who have already mentioned it and I found the presentation to be terrifying. It's really quite terrifying. Just thinking strategically about all the different things that could happen is a terrifying thing, but of course, that's what you have to do if you want to be prepared for that once in a lifetime, hopefully never happens kind of thing. So, and that's what we have to do, be prepared. So, it was very interesting and we learned a lot. Also, wanted to mention that, was it just last night, Tuesday night? We had the mental health community conversations. Brendan Prontowski mentioned it earlier. Incredible work done over the past year by a very large group of people that has sort of constantly been evolving, new people coming in, you know, other people rotating out for whatever reason. And it's been a very, very interesting journey. I feel very happy and honored to have been a part of that and I look forward to what we have lying ahead. I think we have come up with some specific things that will be very manageable, very doable, and we have a ton of support out in our community and I just want to say thank you. I feel very, very fortunate that we have so many amazing people helping to continue to build that and hold on to that culture of, of caring. I really, I really do. So, yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much. Any working group reports?
You do policy?
Policy Working Group continues to work diligently. Spent two hours today. I think we talked about a couple policies. I know when they are brought to you, they will be more than 80% complete, but we will still ask for your input. But we are, we're working through the 200s and they're very important policies because they have to do with our school board work, so when we bring them, they'll be top shelves.
Can I just, I'll say too, in our meeting, we just met this morning, Barb made the suggestion that when we do have these to the 80% mark, it's going to be a big group. It's all of the 200s. And we think that it might be useful for the whole, the rest of the board to have a little bit more time to really review them. So, we'll hopefully be able to get them out to you a little bit more than just, you know, like the week before, maybe even two meetings before, two or three weeks before we're planning to talk about them. So, you have plenty of time to really ask questions and give us feedback and all of that.
Perfect, great. Director Pelletier?
I just wanted to say before previous Chair Hapner, you know, shot me down with the old call the question, I did want to say that in, in when we voted on our group, I do believe that the voices, at least we have this much, that we do have some voices that can hopefully help expand on some of those areas that we need to work on. And we do have, in, in some of the staff there, we have some phenomenal voices. So, I did just want to make that last comment.
Before we adjourn, I want to make sure everyone turned this in to me. I had eight and so we're good.
Oh, finance working group. Don't forget us. So, mark your calendars. Come enjoy the, the excitement on Thursday night, May 3rd.
Barbecue?
Perhaps. Dr. Patachek volunteered to bring food. Six o'clock at Central Services to continue our series on the finance learning sessions.
Great.
May 3rd.
May 3rd. All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming early and working with the.